We'll call the Board of County Commissioners meeting to order and let the record show that it is 9:00 a.m. on February the 6th. Ms. Tracy, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I'll try. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that. I'm fighting cold this morning. Yeah, I'll get ya.
Almost a week now.
Madam Secretary, we will call the roll, please.
Commissioner Flower.
Present.
Commissioner Kenda.
Here.
Commissioner Prince.
Present.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate that.
Are you here?
I'm here.
Okay.
I'm present.
You're present?
I said I'm present.
Oh, you're present.
Any amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
I do not, sir.
Okay, I don't believe I have any either. I've got a couple things, but I'll bring them up later.
Old business stuff.
Audience introductions.
Tracy Ballard, Tribune.
You, the mighty breaking.
Thank you for being here.
Rose or look.
Tracy's our only visitor today.
So far.
Approval of the minutes for the January 31st meeting.
I'll move we approve them.
Did you all get a chance to look at those?
I did.
All seconds motion. Been proved, moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the January 31st, 2018 Board meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. Minutes of the January 31st meeting have been approved. Thank you, Kelly, for keeping us moving forward with all of that.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Items, Mr. Kenda.
Since our last meeting, I've been working with the Road and Bridge guys on several things. Today I want to discuss, we don't have to move on anything necessarily, but that Hermit Road culvert has turned out to be a little too expensive to go the DOT and the DOLA route, 300 and some odd thousand, our portion of that would be 120, 30, 40 plus, can't afford it. Best route to go that we talked about was going for the DOLA grant, do it ourselves or, you know, contract it out. And the good news is we got time to do it, even if we can't get things done this summer, we could do it next fall, of course. So, I asked Brenda to bring in the DOLA grant. You get this what this is right here, right? Want to get that moved as fast as we can in order to catch it for this cycle and move forward so we can discuss that at the old business part of the meeting. And then, you know, I've been working with the, let's see, the several requests on the road. I know we're going to have a discussion with the Bear Basin guys, is that today?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And same old stories, you know, worrying about the dust and what we can do about it. And we've got several options that Gary and I have been discussing and we'll work on those when he gets here.
Okay, good. Thank you. Anything else?
Hey, hi.
By the way, we have a new visitor.
Yes, we do. Welcome.
Sorry I'm late.
That's okay, no problem. Mr. Prince, anything for the...
I have a couple items, sir. Since the last meeting, I attended the Costa County Economic Development Workshop, that was Monday the 29th. I went to the Regional Housing Meeting with you on the 30th down in Canyon, it was an excellent meeting. I, let's see, I attended the Person of the Year Meeting that Cart put on, I was an excellent handshaker. Went to the Planning and Zoning Committee Meeting last night. You and I attended the Dennis Hunt Meeting yesterday, which I felt was an excellent educational opportunity, especially for new commissioners. That's what I did, and then I have an issue I'd like to just comment on. It's my opinion in last week and yesterday, you usurped your power as a county commissioner on two occasions. The first one was when you went to the planning and zoning and asked them to move any reference to dark skies without Board approval. That's Commissioner, three Commissioner, at least two-thirds of the Commissioners' decision. The second one was yesterday, you told Vic Barnes, the Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Committee, that the Commissioners will not speak and he should make that announcement ahead of time. That's according to Vic, I did not hear it, of course. I feel that you have, do not have the authority, in my opinion, to make decisions for the entire Board. You certainly don't have the authority to speak for me, whether I'm going to speak at a meeting or not. I understand you're new, I understand we're feeling out what to do, and I'm just bringing that to your attention, so I hope it doesn't happen again.
Okay, can I answer then?
Of course.
That, I think you've got a lot of things out of context. What we have had since we've been appointed Commissioners is a rough draft of the zoning and planning draft, and they've given it to all of us to consider and understand. And I'm used to taking a look at things and seeing what's there and what is right and wrong in my mind. I didn't speak for any Commissioners. And I told, you know, everybody I've talked to that has asked me questions, what we see that, my view is that these are enforceable regulations and laws cannot be written if it's ambiguous. That's the only thing I've ever said, and that included dust, noise, smells, you know, and we're going to exempt those kinds of things in the right to ranch. And so, I was just looking at the thing and, in passing, and it was their option to do whatever they wanted to. I didn't say the Commissioners would do X or that it was my deal. So if they want to take it out of context, that's fine, I appreciate the heads up on issues like that. Until we see it, to me, it's their job to recommend the right things for us to make decisions on. And I wanted to make sure that, you know, that was my opinion and I never spoke for the Commissioners. And as far as Vic Barnes goes, what was the second part of that?
You told him to make an announcement before last night's meeting that the Commissioners are only there to observe and...
When did I say that? All I've ever said is that those kind of meetings, planning and workshop meetings, are not there for us to make comments at, and as a matter of fact, in some cases, it's illegal because we in fact make decisions or imply decisions in those cases. So I told him if I was going to go, I would not say anything if I could make the meeting. And so...
And that would be you, but I can't speak for Tom.
Well, and I said, and that's my impression, that's the thing that we as Commissioners would be doing.
I did speak, and I feel that I have the authority to speak, and I don't feel that anybody has the right to say that I can't. On the first one, I fully comprehend what you're saying. As I was, I'm just hearing this second and third hand, if it came to me as more than a recommendation to take all references to dark skies and noise pollution and odors and other things out of that, I don't think that's appropriate for you to tell them what to put in their draft without us discussing it.
I didn't tell them to do that, I just said that was my, that was an impression I had, and I said if it came to us and we had to, and they didn't, where they were deadlocked or whatever it is, you know, it would be my position.
Okay, I fully accept that, and let's just be careful because impressions get out, and I felt that the way it was related to me was that, was beyond the scope of what any one of us individually could do. And I fully accept what you're saying, and let's just be more careful in the future. Is that reasonable?
Yes, and I would also say the same, we all have that. There's an email train out there that Clint started on dark skies that you chimed in on as well and gave your opinion of whether that should be voted on or not, and who wouldn't vote for that? So, you know, we all have to be careful.
And that is, speaking for myself, and you're welcome to speak for yourself.
Right, and that's what I was doing.
You spoke for the three of us.
No, I didn't.
Okay, I accept what you're saying, but the way it was portrayed, you spoke for the three of us, take it out of the regulation. Whether it was or was not does not matter at this point, I'm just asking us to be more careful with that kind of thing. Is that fair enough?
Yeah, and I would interject too. Vic came to me yesterday and said that, "I want you to know that Bill asked me to make a statement at the beginning of the meeting that Jay and Tom were only going to be at the meeting to listen and not speak." And I thought the same thing as Jay did, I thought, "Well, wait a minute, that's not, that's not Bill or any other Commissioner's responsibility to determine whether or not I will speak or whoever." So, I asked Vic, I said, "You're the Chairman, I guess you could say whatever you want, but I'm requesting that you do not move forward with that statement on my behalf, at least, I can't speak for Jay."
And he may have taken it further than what I had implied, and the point was, is that we're there to be listening and understanding.
Well, not necessarily, and that's not a...
And I didn't say we couldn't say...
We may choose to sit there and listen, but that's, we're not under any gag order either.
No.
So, to say that we're just there to listen is not, if that's our personal choices, Commissioners, that's fine, but to put that on us to say, "Well, you guys, we're only going to go in there and listen," I don't think is correct. Whether it's me saying it, you or Jay, doesn't matter who.
I agree, and that wasn't any intent when I was talking to them.
I accept that, and alls I'm asking is let's be more careful in the future, the three of us, to not make it appear as if one of us is speaking for the three of us if it wasn't agreed in an open meeting.
Right. And I also want to make it very clear that, you know, we want to have the Boards that we charter to do things for us, to do them without fear that they're stepping out of bounds with something that we may think, and I want to be very careful not to give them, you know, when they come to us with a recommendation, that's what it has to be, is their view. And that's the only reason that I've been concerned from the get-go.
Yeah, I do appreciate our ability to have these conversations, this would be unhealthy if we had these...
Absolutely.
...feelings and not be able to express them in a meeting, I mean, this is hell. It may be uncomfortable at times, and certainly I'll have my time when I'm going to stub a toe, and I expect you gentlemen to...
Well, we're a team, and we have to help each other, and that's what, that's all my intent is. And good, I appreciate yours as well.
And I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, very good. Anything else, sir?
I, I take care of my food.
Okay. Yeah, I attended, go ahead.
I apologize, I missed one, I just noticed it. I met at length with the Wetmore folks at my normal monthly meeting. They made a request that I thought was reasonable, and I told them I'd bring it to the three of us to see if they felt that was okay. They have minor issues like changing light bulbs.
Start over again, what was that?
Wetmore Community Center, I went to my monthly meeting, and they made a request that I told them that I thought I'd bring to you and see if the Commissioners felt it was appropriate. They have, first of all, most of the folks down there are, I don't want to say elderly, but none of them are spring chickens. To say, I'm trying to say that politely.
Let me help you not stub your toe.
Try not to. But they have trouble with minor maintenance things like changing a light bulb, one of the moldings was coming loose and need to be glued back, just really minor, minor things. I told them if it's plumbing, electrical, anything that takes expertise, call me, and if it's something I can authorize fixing, I will, if not, I'll bring it to you like I have with other things that I felt needed to be done. So the request that I would like to suggest for discussion is that we ask Mr. Reinhardt, our county maintenance gentleman, maybe to go down there once a month or at least contact them periodically or have them contact him periodically so that he could go down and help with some of those minor issues that come up that are, I think, part of his job description. So he's been, he's been kind of excluded from down there, they kind of feel like they're a redheaded stepchild, if anybody's a redheaded stepchild, I don't mean anything, but you know what I'm saying, they would like to have the same kind of services the other county issues have. I told them, "I felt that was reasonable, but it wasn't a decision I could make, and I'd bring it to you folks." So that's what I would like to suggest if we can arrange that. And how you'd like it done is up to you, I mean, I'm not the building maintenance person, but I would sure like to see them have those minor issues handled.
Good. Yeah, I think certainly that it doesn't make sense to hire somebody out of Florence Canyon, Carr and Springfield Publo to come rehang a blind or, you know, that, all of that little stuff. So, I can certainly speak to Ed and have a conversation with him, but I'd like to get his feelings on that. And I would certainly be willing at times to go down and do some minor stuff as well.
I did while I was down there, but I thought on an ongoing maintenance basis it would be good for him to go down.
Yeah, I consider might be a time when we're not available and they need something, so if it's all right with you gentlemen, I'll have that conversation with Ed, see what he thinks about that.
Thank you.
And that reminds me, when we were talking, helping people, the Wetmore guys do want to have some asphalt put in front of the building later on, I'm working out with Gary.
Right.
We'll do that when the asphalt, the hot plant gets going and the ground gets warm, and we'll be able to squeeze it in very cheaply as they're making their runs.
Right. That question had come up before, and I appreciate you bringing it up again. Gary had mentioned that when he's doing hot asphalting or having it done, there's often excess, and he would put it down there, so it was, and Wetmore knows about it, they know that we're not going to go out and hire a company to do it, but as the opportunity approaches that we would use anything we had left over.
Yeah, I appreciate, you know, when they're going to do that, they're going to be happy.
Right, good.
Yeah, I'm assuming that's not a budgetary thing, so I don't guess it would be a decision we all three have to make.
No, I don't think so. It fits in the budget.
Anything else, gentlemen?
All I have.
Okay, I would just report to you that on February 1st, I did attend Homeland Security Advisory Committee Meeting down in Publo at the Sheriff's Office and their Emergency Management Offices combined. Had a good meeting, went from 8:30 to 12:30, and Beth Archuleta from Emergency Services was there along with Cindy Howard. And so, that Advisory Committee meets, I think, once a month, and so I went to try to get up to speed about the issues and stuff. The gentleman, if you guys remember, we went to a Homeland Security Workshop at CCI, and I forgot his last name, Paul, the kind of the big, heavyset guy with the flat top haircut that ran that meeting.
I know him.
And I keep wanting to say Parsons, and obviously that's not right, because Paul Parsons is his trails.
Hanky? Hanky? I don't remember, something like that.
I just can't remember. And so anyway, he chaired that meeting and had brought some, basically they were looking for input from the, there's nine regions, and so they were looking from the South Region about what's important for Homeland Security and what the state can do to make sure that they're lining up with the thoughts of those different regions, so it was a good meeting. Then, of course, on the second, Bill and I traveled to Denver separately, I might add, but we did go up and meet with Chip Taylor, the Executive Director for Colorado Counties Incorporated, and had a good meeting with him, and he went through basically his County Commissioner 101 slide presentation, and so we talked with him at length about what it is to be an effective County Commissioner. And then on Saturday, the 3rd, Tony Supan and Jake Shai and myself continued our work on the door going from the courtroom into the judges chambers. We did get that foundation cut out of there, we rented a jackhammer and a demo saw from Valier's, and so we finally did get that all cut out of there. So we're ready to start framing that in and getting ready for that door, the door was supposed to be in today, so progress is moving forward there.
Is that the one that accidentally got wrecked?
Yeah, and I went and looked at that door, and it's wrecked. It, not only did it tear the six-inch jam up, but it actually must have lit just right on the end, so it cracked it all the way across, it's a solid core door, and it's cracked all the way from the door, bore set over, so there was no way we were going to be able to use it. But Jeremy had already ordered us another one anyway, so.
Good.
And then, of course, we met with Dennis Hunt here yesterday, as you alluded to, and then the planning and zoning meeting yesterday afternoon, and then I went up and sat in on the Silver Cliff Town Board Meeting, and one of the things they discussed was a road that ends at Silver Cliff City Limits going up to the Towers, Bunker Hill Road, and the lady was there and indicated that she would be coming to the county to discuss that road from her property on up, so I don't know anything other than that, I have visited with her about another item or two, but I would assume that at some point she will ask to be on the agenda at a county meeting. I did, was forwarded a letter from her attorney to the town of Silver Cliff, did you get that, Jay?
I did not.
Okay, can you shoot that to?
I get, I sent it to all three.
Oh, did you? Okay. It was probably this morning.
It was yesterday.
Yesterday, okay. So if you have a chance...
It was originally from my name's wire.
Yeah, I saw it.
Yeah, let me pull that up for you real quick, Jay, just so...
Oh, yes, I did read it, I'm sorry.
Robinson Hungate.
I did read it, thank you.
All right, good. So anyway, just a little backstory there, I'm sure Will...
So they just sent it?
Uh, we got it yesterday, correct? Yeah. And they spoke about that at the Silver Cliff Town Meeting last night, so, again, I'm sure Will, that'll hit our agenda at some point in time, so just a heads up there. And then I wanted to read a note, I know you gentlemen each got one, as did I, but Kathy Griffin also sent a note to the Commissioners, so I thought it would be appropriate to read that. Dated February 1, 2018, "Dear Commissioners, thank you for your financial support for the Trails for All Community Workshop Tuesday evening. As Commissioner Flower could see, your assistance helped provide good food, clearly not enough, a fairly large enough roof over our heads, and the ability to support another nonprofit, and well-produced maps to get meaningful information from the more than 100 people and guests who attended. You, the Commissioners, made a difference. Thank you, Kathy Griffin."
Very nice.
And I did obviously attend that meeting, which I think I reported at our last meeting about that, so. And then, I had a conversation with Gary Hyde, welcome, sir, the other day concerning this DOLA grant, we talked about that a little bit, and then a subsequent phone call, which I will wait to address, I just want the Commissioners to know that I did talk to a gentleman who's been hauling material into the county, and so when we get into the Road and Bridge part of that, I think we'll pursue that discussion a little further. Thank you for trying to reach out to me yesterday, I was just in meetings and I wanted to call you and have this conversation prior to this morning's meeting, Gary, but didn't happen, so nothing earth-shattering, but I don't want you to think I was trying to circumvent our agreement that I would call you back when I got some information and...
That's all right.
Just got swamped, so. And then, another item that I want to bring up, it's really for Gary and Road and Bridge as well, and that is our snow removal. Here, I think our loader operator got kind of a late start, and our parking lot was pretty well full by the time he got here, so Ed Reinhardt, the maintenance guy, asked if there was a chance that we could get here earlier to plow that snow before the vehicle started showing up for the workday.
We normally do, but this one got us by surprise. It was forecasted to get any interest, so...
Exactly what I told him, I said, "I think everybody got caught by surprise because it was not predicted four or five."
I don't even see them, I see them out first thing this morning instead of being out through the night.
Yeah.
They didn't think we were going to get this much, so normally we would be out here, so it's one of those unusual situations.
Yeah, and I told Ed, I said, "I think that was exactly the case, that they weren't planning on having that much snow to have to deal with." But he asked me to carry it forward to you, so I told him I would. And then the other thing is, and I spoke to, what was the loader driver this morning? Do you know who came up here?
There was two of them.
Okay.
One was Darren, and the other one was Dennis Mallory.
Okay, it must have been Darren all along, I'm not sure. Anyway, I just spoke to him as I was coming to work and informed him that we did have another small pile of concrete rubble that we were, that we put out by the light pole because we finished the demo work on that door in the courthouse. They had come up a couple weeks ago and gathered up some concrete and stuff, and I was going to call you about that also yesterday, and that didn't happen because we were in meetings, but I do have a little pile of rubble out there. I mentioned it to him, and he said he'd talk to you about it, so.
Can I just, I read, you know, the slag, is it called slag, whatever went under the bridge, we made those piles when they were flooding, and it was such an eyesore, and I noticed that you guys were moving it, I just wanted to tell you. I've heard from several people saying, "Thanks for doing that," and I also thank you for doing that.
You're talking about the slash piles in Wetmore?
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, that's a great point. I saw the other day, they started burning it, and I thought, "Man, good luck," but we all knew there was so much dirt and stuff mixed in with that, but yeah, I saw that they were also hauling that stuff out of there. Where are they going with that?
You know, Larry told me, I can't remember, they had kind of a washout to clarify where they put it.
And do you know, come in, sir, do you know who owns that property that...
Where it was sitting?
Yeah, where the slash piles were sitting?
Yeah.
Isn't that Bill Doniles?
Oh, was it Bill?
I think it's placed it.
Okay, good. Yeah, okay, perfect. All right, good. Anything else, gentlemen, on Commissioner Items?
Good, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
This is your question, it's all right.
That's all right.
Just you were talking about snow a little, so I saw it out there, and he was with the shell, and I reminded him, I don't know if he really thought about it, that we've got that six-wheeler UTV over there with the plow on it, and I told him the keys are right, I just use it as much as he wants, we only ask that if, you know, he uses all the fuel in it to replace it, but...
Okay, good, thank you.
I can't imagine he would use it that much anyways.
Yeah, and I saw him coming back from what appeared to be over at the Sheriff's Office, so I'm assuming he took his snow blower over there this morning, did you happen to notice, or?
Maybe so.
Yeah, it looked like he was coming.
Looked like it was a show, either or, that UTV is pretty handy.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Because you can't always get any when these guys come, they can't get...
Well, yeah, and I think he's been coming in at 6:00 or 6:30, so that might be the thing too, is we might just say, "Hey, you know, maybe it's worthwhile to jump in that UTV and blast this snow out away from the building far enough that at least people can come in and park if they get here early," but, yeah, definitely a work in progress with that whole thing, you know, trying to sort out how early he needs to be here, what needs to be done first, the priorities and that kind of thing, but thank you for offering that, appreciate it, Sheriff. Anything else, gentlemen, under Commissioner Items?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll move ahead. Attorney Items, Counselor?
I have nothing to report except that letter we were talking about a minute ago to the town of Silver Cliff, I saw that, and I think eventually the county is going to be involved in that, so I'll start working on it and familiarize myself with that 1986 resolution they're talking about, and start to get a handle on this.
Okay. Yeah, Bunker Hill Road from Silver Cliff going up, Carrie?
Yeah, I got a copy of that letter I read this morning, I had a chance to absorb a little bit.
Okay, good. So at least when we talk about that, you'll know kind of what the, a little backstory there is. And certainly I'm not an attorney, so I got lost in some of the legal ease of wit, whatever, and I wondered what that really means, but I decided not to go there, but anyway. Okay, thank you, sir. Anything else?
No, I'm good.
All right, good. Administrative Assistant Items?
I just have one thing. You guys probably saw that Cindy Howard sent out that email about the EOC Workshop, and I wanted to ask you if it was okay if I went to that on the 21st. I know, in the past, I've been involved in that, when we had the fire, I was, they asked me to go over there, so sort of want to keep up on that.
I certainly do not have a problem with that, I'm planning on attending it myself, so.
I am too, and I appreciate it.
Gentlemen, your feelings?
My feeling is I appreciate the initiative to go and be involved.
Okay.
Because there'll be a day that we'll ask Ms. Brenda to wear a different hat when it comes down to emergency services somewhere along the line, I'm almost certain of that. I'm almost certain of that, so.
And that's all I have.
Okay. And I think I have jotted down that that was from eight to four?
Ten to four.
Ten to four, yeah.
On the 21st.
Okay.
And they're not sure if it's going to be in the S.A.R. building or the fire?
Yeah, they were thinking about trying to move it down to the firehouse, so.
Wait, hang on a second. That was the 21st?
Yes.
No, I thought I had it on my calendar, I guess not.
Yeah.
Which reminds me, another item I had was, I won't be here. We're going to be gone for a couple of weeks, so I'll be gone from the 9th through the 22nd. Although I will be reachable by phone and I can vote over the phone.
There you go.
We proved that already.
Okay, and we shouldn't have any.
There's nothing in between. We move one meeting.
Shouldn't have any need for a vote, but certainly it's something.
There's some items that needs to come up.
We don't have a meeting until the 23rd.
Right.
While we're talking, I'm going to be out of town on the 8th through the 18th. And I'll be attending the tourism meeting by phone. I've already made those arrangements.
Okay, 8th through the 18th, okay.
And I'll be available by phone, email, smoke signals.
And the tourism board is scheduled?
The tourism board is on the 13th at nine o'clock in this office.
Anything else, Ms. Brenda?
That's it.
Thank you. We'll move into staff reports. We'll start with the Road and Bridge, Mr. Hyde. Welcome this morning. Thanks for coming in.
Been up bright and early. Boy, you've got cold hands again.
I know, I don't know what they're feeling. You can tell, you can tell working men from commissioners, right? Working men's hands are still cold.
I'm going to work, have to work on that circulation issue. Well, one of the things I had on here to talk about is the sale of surplus equipment. We've got a truck that, it's got some age to it.
Okay.
It's, in fact, I've got some specifics on it, and it's one that I'd like to get rid of. It needs a lot of work and we've been using it to pull a belly down trailer. And we had to take it out of service because of a clutch problem. And then I was talking to Byron about it and he gave me the lowdown on what all is wrong with this truck. And based on the age and the miles and things like that, I, I don't feel like it's probably in the best interest of the Road and Bridge Department and the county to put any money in it.
Okay.
In fact, one of the things we talked about last year and one of the things we budgeted for was a truck and trailer. So this is the one that I was going to replace with the new truck and trailer in 18, so.
Can I ask a question? Obviously, with 826,000 miles and it's a long list of, I mean, the truck is in not very good condition, but does it make more sense to, to sell it or is it, is it maybe rusty? I mean, is somewhere else that could still use it or is it better to just get rid of it?
I don't think Rusty's got a need for it. It's that old blue P, the 88, I mean, landfill. And I, anybody else?
Just want to allocate it if it had a, if it was worth, it doesn't look like it'd be worthwhile anyway considering what's wrong with it.
Well, I think it would, it'd be something, it would be a liability because of the things that are wrong with it.
Right.
So the engine has been overhauled in it once.
It has had a.
So it's got only 100,000 miles on it, right?
Yeah.
So that's pretty good. It'll be worth some money to.
Yeah, you know, it's been my experience in the past, when you take a truck like this and surplus it or try and trade it into a dealer, they're going to give you about five or six.
Yeah, they won't, they won't do anything.
At about $6,000 is about the max you're going to be able to get for it. I mean, it just.
Looks to me like we got a lot of use out of this truck. I mean, it is what it is.
Yeah, it is. I mean, it's, it's done its job and it's time to let somebody else have it.
Somebody else is heading.
Maybe the, maybe Jay needs it for something.
Put it this way, thanks anyway.
Are you anticipating treating this in on another one or are you going to try and sell it?
We could look at that. I don't know if any of the vendors that we'd get sealed, I mean, the bids on for a truck would be interested in this or not. I guess that's one thing that we could explore, but if we don't do that, then we would, I think the, the way that works is we'd have to, I don't know about Custer County, but what we've done in the past where it came from was we put it up for sealed bids, we advertised it in the paper for about three weeks. We offered it to the public for purchase, and if nobody could come up with at least what we're at wanting for it, then we, we could do whatever we wanted with it from that point.
What do you think they advertise it for? How much?
Well, I, I think we need to get at least five or 6,000 out of it.
Yeah, I bet you can get it.
Yeah, I would think so.
You'd rather do that than trade it in on a, a new truck or?
Well.
Newer truck?
You need a new truck.
Well, we budgeted for another truck.
Yeah.
We're in a belly dump.
Yeah.
And that's by leasing it, right?
Yeah, lease purchase.
So it'd be hard to get anything out of the trade on it if, doesn't hurt to try to advertise.
I'm not sure if, and if we did trade it in, I think that they're going to probably offer about what we'd get if we took sealed bids for it. I guess what we could do is offer it for sealed bids and then I, in the meantime, I could get ahold of a couple of our dealers and say, you know, come look at it and see what you think, so. We could go both routes.
I, I like that idea, but what I'd really like to do before we authorize that is to check with Donna Hobbie and make sure that there's not already a procedure in place to discard and how to eliminate old equipment, because I'd rather follow the procedure we have. So maybe a conversation with her would be in order to say, do we have a policy on that? And if not, I would certainly feel that it's appropriate to go ahead and put it out for sealed bids.
And, you know, once again, I can contact some of the vendors and say, this is what we've got, and they'll probably say, well, we're not interested in it. But I mean, it's worth, worth checking.
Sure. Well, I would certainly defer to you on that. I, I can argue with Jay's theory about checking the procedures that we have. I guess there's really probably two thoughts. One, there may be people in the communities that think they deserve an opportunity to submit a sealed bid to buy something that the county owns. I don't know that. The other thing is, it may be more headache to go through that process than to just trade it in on a, on a lease purchase thing, so.
Yeah, I think that I'm kind of leaning towards giving the, the area residents a chance to purchase this if they can use it.
Yeah, the only thing I'm aware of in the government surplus world is the same, and I would assume the same here, county government's government. That the only big issue is you can't, you can't let one guy decide he wants to buy it. It's, you let everybody have the option, which means advertise it and say, here's what's available, take a bid on it.
Yeah. And is it, do you know, Clay, is it three weeks that we need to advertise?
I, I think it's at least a couple of weeks. Rusty, we've done this before, evidently, through old equipment, put it up for bid.
We had an auction before.
An auction? Okay, but that was when there was a lot of other, it wasn't just your one item.
Well, would you mind talking with Donna? I think that's a good point to see if she has some perspective on it, and if not, I would think if you, if you feel like we need to put it out in sealed bids, then we write something up.
Okay. We could either do it that way or by auction, you know, as long as we advertise it properly.
Auction just cost us a little bit, don't we do that?
Yeah, for one item.
Yeah, we had more than one item, maybe an auction might be about to go, but.
Maybe the thing to do, just, just maybe we put it out for sealed bid. If we don't reach a minimum or whatever feels appropriate, then put it up for auction. And we know what's going, if we don't put a reserve on it, and whatever it is, it is. And it looks like it's pretty well used up anyway.
Yeah, and in the meantime, I can get ahold of these vendors and see what they might offer for it.
And if we find it's worth a whole lot less than we're guessing, or maybe more, we'll find out.
Sure.
And I'm assuming if you do put it out for sealed bids, you would just put your hours that it's available to be, have people come look at it, maybe through Thursday and.
Yeah.
You know, the big plus on here is still that engine, and that's what it's worth. There are guys up here that would buy that truck for the parks and.
I agree with that.
That engine especially, not a lot of miles on it.
Okay, good.
And then the purchase of two AEDs, I've been looking into buying a couple of those, mainly because we're not a bunch of young guys that are working.
AEDs.
Oh, AEDs, yes.
Yeah, we're not a bunch of.
Just before you actually buy, I got them, I got two of them down in Wetmore through a grant from.
Retag.
That's where they probably came from, but I went through the, the, Alyssa Magnuson. I spoke to her about it. She was able to get those, and it may have been re-tagged. So before you buy those, would you mind just giving her a call and say, hey, I need two? Is that something you could help with like you did down in Wetmore? Just a suggestion.
That's where we got the ones here too, is through, through the county help.
That's what I did, already contacted her.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
She told me, no, that's okay. She told me about the grant application and things like that. So that's what I'd, I'd like to do is pursue a grant. And the, the ones that Alyssa got were $1,800, two of them. I'd like to have one for the east shop and one for the west shop, but I, that's what I thought I'd do.
Get them. What's, what's, what's the process for the grant? What is it? Who's grant?
I don't know, I'd have to check on that.
It would be the same grants like at last meeting you guys approved when Beth Archileta was here, those are the same grants.
Retag. Yeah, it would be pretty simple then if we've done it before.
Yeah, I think that we've got, there's a good possibility we can get a grant to get these things bought.
So you got the money.
Well, that's.
Plus of that.
Exactly. If the grant doesn't work out for us, I just wanted you to know that when that voucher came through and you saw a bill for it, that's what these are for. I think that it's probably important that we have one of those in the shops.
Effectually, I absolutely agree with you. I think it's a worthwhile endeavor to have those down there. Hopefully, they just collect dust or never used, like life insurance, you know?
Sure.
You buy it and you hope you don't use it.
Mr. Darren Hayes.
Good.
I was going to show you a picture also. When we talked about that Kermit Bridge project, I can, you know, unless the person, this is what we're looking at, it's on the left page, that's pretty similar to the box.
Oh, square box?
Yeah. It's a aluminum box culvert with green walls.
Right now, we got three culverts that are gamed together in there.
Just, if you, very pretty, but I'm looking at. Help me get my, my record around this. A while back, we had a, a station, a station came in to talk about, is this the same culvert we're talking about?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, and then we were going to get a client to do it. And then I'm hearing this morning that we probably could do it less expensively ourselves? Is that what I'm hearing? Give me up the speed of this, please.
Yeah, what, what the deal is, is if we go with that C-DOT grant, because of their requirements to get your hands on those federal funds, there are a lot more hoops that you got to jump through. And it, it takes the project from two weeks to a minimum of five weeks. And I met with Jimmy Hayson, he's the liaison with C-DOT, kind of a middleman between whoever the grantee is and C-DOT. And he, he assured me that this project at a minimum would be $300,000. And because of the grant that we've got through DOLA, the 140,000 there and then the C-DOT grant, the county's portion is going to be probably more than if we just go out on our own and use the C-DOT grant, or not the DOL grant.
No, the DOL grant.
Okay.
And that are just, I mean, they're, they're telling me that it can be upwards of 350,000, so.
That was the thing I mentioned in the last meeting, Jay, about this. And the other issues were the bureaucratic hoops you got to go through. The right of way is not wide enough. We got to get a, what do you call it, deferment or whatever.
There's a right of way acquisition firm that's separate from any of the other agencies like the engineering firm, intensive engineering. They're the ones that acquire, they go through the paperwork and the process to get temporary right of way.
And then when you go through that and you try to get all those agencies to coordinate together, it stretches the timeout. And we can't have that road shut down for six weeks.
It's a very important, it's on.
So.
I like that, you save money. Do you need to get expertise in it? I mean, I, I don't mean to ask a stupid question, but do you need to hire someone to come in who knows how to do this, or is this something that your crew could do with?
When he says by, by ourselves, that means hire a subcontractor.
Okay, that's what, that's what I was referring to.
To optimize, because you take our guys off the road graders, that stops the roads and we can't help Amy.
That's exactly what I was concerned.
So that's the point. And also, the, the fact is, if we do it ourselves, if the grants would have gone through, we would have been able to, our matching piece of that would have been about 40,000 bucks we'd have to spend. Nice. But with the fact that we have to go with just the DOLA grant because of the time savings, it's worth the, we're going to end up spending about 70K, I guess, roughly what it'll be if you match what's there. So it's a little more expensive for us to handle, but it saves time and you don't, you're not betting on the come of whether the, the, everything's going to go through to approve it.
Yeah, and actually, I think that it would probably cost as much or more if we use those two grants versus just the DOLA grant, so.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's a point that needs to be made here, is we don't have to, we don't have to do it ourselves. We still, we're still in the mix for doing these grants. It's whether or not we feel like it's financially feasible.
Right. So that was the recommendation, I wanted him to bring forward, is that we'll have to consider, is spending the 40K that we already have in the budget to do it, or the 70K, I should say now. And still, you would need that DOLA grant. If we did it by ourselves, by ourselves, you're looking at 100,000 bucks or whatever it is out of our own budget, not, not in the mix.
If we do it ourselves, is there any issue with environmental, anything like that that needs to be?
Yeah, we're still going to get permits, but.
Okay.
We've actually had Army Corps of Engineering individual with them up here and they looked at it and told us, recommended that structure that goes back in and things like that. He said the permit's not going to be difficult to obtain and things like that, so.
So the estimate is out of pocket to the county would be about 70,000 if we did it ourselves, if we receive a DOLA grant? We already have the DOLA grant?
Yes.
And with that DOLA grant, that DOLA grant is like, I call it a 50-50 matching grant. It's actually, it's 54 and 46, I think, is what Brenda was telling me.
Well, and it's actually the opposite. We pay 54 and they pay 46.
Grantee, according to that DOLA grant, the grantee is 54.
Okay. And when would you think about doing this?
Not until probably October of this year, when the water level's down again.
After haze season?
After the haze season.
That's, that's a fact.
We want to pick the time when the waters have had its lowest and the least amount We wanna pick the time when the water's at its lowest and the least amount of traffic.
And you'd wanna be aware that the alternative routes, there's two of them. One's going out toward Pines and the other one's down here on Schoolfield. And it's an extra couple miles for people commuting. They're gonna bellyache a little bit, but they'll bellyache worse if the road keeps caving in.
If it did, they would have a lot more bellyaching, so...
Well, yeah, 'cause we wouldn't be prepared to replace it.
Right.
We'd be behind.
It'd be months before you get it all done.
So we got plenty of time to warn the public and everybody'll be ready.
Yeah, I appreciate you both being working on this. This makes good sense and it's budgeted and it has to be done. We've been talking about it for probably close to a year now. Time to get a shovel in the ground, get this thing fixed before it falls in.
Also, what we will do is that road is very soft and it heaves from the bridge toward Macy. And that's with it out of service, there's an opportunity to not just skin coat it with some chip seal, which you can't. Gary will tell you, it's gone past that. We'll have to dig up things and actually throw some road base in it and redo it. It's an opportunity to, as we get through it, perfect time.
Yeah, when I reviewed that DOLA grant, I believe it talked about, obviously, there's some timelines about once we submit the grant, we have to put that out to bid within, I think it's thirty days. And once we get those back, we have to let the bid out within thirty days. And then I think from the windows from October eighteen to June of nineteen, and then the final report has to be submitted in September of two thousand and nineteen, so...
Yeah, that's what it is.
I would assume that you will build a timeline if we move forward on that and hit all those appropriate dates. So I would guess, obviously, DOLA is waiting for a signed copy of this grant back.
When's the latest we can get it back to them and be okay in this cycle? You know?
I don't, I did not see it.
I didn't see any.
I could ask Christie, but...
I think sooner we get it in, the better we are.
Yeah, just as soon as they sign it and get it back to us, then we have our timeline starts.
That's right.
Once we submit it and we get it back, then we gotta be ready to move. So I guess my question to you, Gary, would be, you know, when do you feel comfortable about getting on the clock and starting moving forward?
I'd like to read through that again before I answer.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I've got it.
You got a copy in?
Yep, Brenda sent me one. But I'd like to read through that and familiarize myself with it a little bit.
Yeah, and that was my question to Brenda. I said, I think we need to be careful about just signing it and shipping it because that does put us on notice. We're on the clock.
You gotta have everything ready.
Exactly. And that's why I'd like to talk to Christie and then read through that. I just briefly read through it.
I guess now, if, since we're in the middle of this discussion, probably as appropriate time as any for me to relay to you the phone conversation I had on a couple fronts with Mike Langston. We had talked about that on the phone a little bit and I told you I would reach out to him. I did. He is hauling from his pit in Fremont County to his property in the county. We had talked about maybe he's hauling to a property out of the county and they're just going through the county. That is not the case. They are hauling that fill material to his house.
Right there on the county line? Oh, okay.
Yep, and I said, well, are you about done? And he said, no, not really. He said, we still have a lot of material to haul in there. He said, if you're having issues with your citizens, I could certainly scale that back. I can hold off for a little while. He said, here's the deal, Tom. I'm using those trucks because they're downtime on my schedule. That's why we're doing it. He said, I don't have another job for those trucks to be running on, so that's why we're hauling that fill material. They're actually filling in a big load spot in part of his field or pasture below his house. So he said, we still have quite a bit. I didn't ask him how many more loads they thought, but that's what they're doing is they're hauling to his place. He is terminating in the county.
Typically, this time of year, that would be good timing on his part because of the snow we might have gotten and the roads being frozen. But since we haven't gotten any substantial moisture, the roads are dry and they're not holding up very good. But I mean, it is what it is. He's got the right.
Yeah, I mean, he's got the right to do it. And I know Mike, I've known him for years, and he said, Tom, if it's an issue, I can scale back. He said, I hate to quit 'cause I'm trying to keep these trucks busy. They're costing me. And I don't wanna let those guys go. I don't wanna have to furlough them out or whatever. So I just wanted to throw that in the mix. And then I also spoke to him about this Herbert Road Bridge project and just said, we've got a project coming up. I know Gary's gonna, as we move forward, we'll put that out for bids for companies that are interested in subcontracting that. He indicated that he would definitely appreciate an opportunity to bid on that. I said, that's great. And then he called me back about four or five minutes later and he said, did you mention an aluminum box culvert as your plan? And I said, yes, I did mention that. I said, I don't think any thing's been signed in concrete, but that's the direction, I think, that our road supervisor's going. And he said, well, he said, I would like to talk to him about that. And I did not give him your number and I wanted to ask you if that's okay. He has installed, his company has installed a couple of those. And he said, the last one they installed, they just had fits. He said, Tom, I'm telling you, I cannot recommend going with aluminum box culvert, no way. And I said, well, I don't know. That's something that you could have a conversation with Gary about. Yeah, the last one they put in failed from weight. It just went down on them. He said, unless you can get five or six feet of cover over one, he said, I am really concerned about these aluminum box culverts. I said, I don't know. I'm not the expert here, but I'll pass your concern on to Gary. And if Gary's amenable to it, then I can give him his phone number and you can have a conversation, which I don't think it would hurt. I don't know if it was up around steamboat or just exactly where they put that in.
How'd you get this square, one in the first place?
It was Skyline Steel that recommended it. And I'm not, yeah, I'm not gonna blame any means commit to anything like that until I have done more research also, so...
Yeah, part of our conversation too was, and I asked him about a concrete culvert. And he said, well, obviously, if you pour in place, then you've got the whole cure requiring to deal with. He said, it'd be ideal if you didn't have any traffic. But he said, certainly, we have installed, this is Mike Langston talking about his company, had installed numerous box culverts precast. But again, that's, I'm, that is just having a conversation.
And that's something that they could, we have checked on is precast concrete box culverts and just to bring them in and set them in place that are already poured. But the expanse goes up a bunch. Yeah. And there's always a possibility of going back with what we got now. But I'd like to go with something a little bit larger, but I'll do some more research and I'll get back with you on that.
Yeah, and if you're, I'll give you his phone number if you wanna have a discussion with him about that. I think it'd be prudent to, you know, at least hear him out.
Sure.
And, you know, go from there. I mean, I think pouring in place would be ideal if we didn't have the traffic thing. But, you know, we'd probably be looking at two weeks just to let the concrete cure and let it go and do the work.
Yeah, bridges that we have poured in the past that for probably six weeks, so I don't know if that'd be a...
Okay. But anyway, I told him I would carry that forward.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to visit with him and get his thoughts, so I'll give him a haul.
Okay, good. So let's hold off on the grant signing for a while until you're, you think it's the timelines set.
You want me to double check with Christie to make sure that we're okay?
Please.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
I don't wanna lose it.
Yeah, you don't wanna lose it.
Otherwise, we've gotta hit another window.
And when you call her, Brenda, I might come up and we can both talk to her at the same time. I've got a couple of questions for her.
You wanna do that like later today?
Yeah, sure, good.
Okay, good. All right, excellent. Okay, what else, sir?
Oh, I just gotta give you this real quick. Like I got some traffic counts towards the end of summer, even one in January. It'd give you an idea, but... I had one set up on two sixty-five here a couple of weeks ago and right off of two seventy-one. And it just, now the second from the bottom, that's one sixty, that's Hermit. That was on a weekend that Donna had an event out here at Painted View, so...
Thousand and thirty-nine?
We, yeah, we had, in one day, we had almost seventeen hundred vehicles.
And that's the road that we're talking about closing for the culvert.
Yeah, and that was, but she had an event there, so...
Yeah, so it's gonna be, I'm gonna guess it's gonna be kinda like Rosita Road, sixty-nine is probably gonna be more.
During that time of the year, it'll probably be a lot less.
Rosita Road and Highway sixty-nine get so much because of the landfill and it's...
What was the timeframe? How many?
It'll show the dates to the right. It was one week.
Was it a week? Each one of these is the same length of time?
Yeah.
Oh, this is not average daily traffic?
Well, it's, it's for one week, but then I averaged each day for that seven days. And it gives us the average daily.
So on Rosita Road, six eighty-nine was a daily count through the week, averaged average. It wasn't the week's count? It is a daily count.
That was for one day on the average.
Multi add by seven. That would be the total.
Yeah. Some of these roads get five to six thousand vehicles a week.
I don't know why I think we owe to Lake Ridge by Hermit Road though.
Gary, get out of here. You're going berserk.
Yeah, and this was interesting because this obviously, you did this on purpose is that's the same time of year that we would be looking at, the October-ish.
Well, he did that in August.
Yeah, that was actually in August for Hermit.
That's why it's gonna be less than that.
Yeah, I was just looking at your October thirty-first, October eighteenth.
Yeah, and this, well, this year, I'm gonna get a lot more. I'm gonna have that thing, once the weather...
Breaks loose.
Yeah, I'm gonna have it laid out pretty much constantly. I wanna get a lot of road counts and see what we're dealing with, so...
On that two sixty-five county road out there where that Y is, do you think a lot of that was because of Langston was hauling or not?
Well, some of it, percentage wise, I'm not sure. You know, sometimes they're taking two seventy-one. It depends on the condition of two sixty-five. Once it starts to get washboard, they, I think they shift over to a two seventy-one and get the good out of it.
But I wouldn't think he could round trip those two or three trucks more than twice a day at the max.
I'm not sure where his source is.
I don't know how many trucks have gone past.
Well, I was just talking about Mike Langston specifically.
That's where she is.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we've been watching and counting. We figure over fifty trucks a day.
Wow, no wonder that would...
Yeah, and from my conversation to Mike, I could be wrong, but I thought he was running at the maximum of three belly dump trucks, round tripping those from his pit in Florence coming up the hardscrabble.
It's like seven loads each.
Well, it's just every ten or fifteen minutes, there's a Langston truck coming one way and then back the other way. So they're coming up the hardscrabble, they're going down to the pit, they're coming back, going down hardscrabble. And I followed a couple of them and they turn and go towards Florence. I don't know how they're staying in the county.
Yeah, yeah. Well, he doesn't, they don't have to stay in the county. He can haul from outside the county.
So it looks very much to us that he's coming from outside the county, through the county, and then back out into Fremont County. So why is he going through Custer Creek?
Yeah, and that's not the case. He, from my conversation with him day before yesterday, he is hauling from outside of the county, the hardscrabble, to his house, which is in the county, and then back down the hardscrabble, back to his pit.
Oh, okay, so we're just mistaken about that.
So, yeah, I don't know. I don't, I'm certainly not disputing or arguing.
It is a really different situation if that's the case, yeah. We just thought, you know, why even come into Custer Creek?
Right. Yeah, so that was the information that I gleaned from that conversation, that he is terminating his haul in the county.
Going out empty.
That is true, he's going out empty.
Yeah. So two, you had a hundred and ninety-four average daily traffic on two sixty-five.
Which road is two sixty-five?
That's the one that goes to Boneyard Park.
Off of two seventy-one. It Y is off of two seventy-one. Yeah, I guess my comment back to when you had done these was, I was thinking about, are we gonna get a sample from that time of the year if we're looking at putting that bridge in? I mean, it wouldn't do any good to do a traffic count there in June or July. That's gonna totally be different in October.
Yeah, it's too late to get it if we do it this fall.
I wouldn't think if we did one right now, it would be very much different in October.
That's right, that's what I'm getting at.
I might just go ahead and get it set up.
Yeah, the summertime counts.
There's no tourists, there's no events out in Painted View. There's no events at Horn Creek. Horn Creek goes down School, or Horn Road anyway.
Well, a lot of those buses come down across this road. I mean, they could, obviously, if we're blocked off, no problem, they could just go down Schoolfield. Yeah, I was just thinking that would give us a representative number that we could look at and say, yeah, we're gonna impact a couple hundred vehicles a day versus a thousand, so...
I'll have those numbers before the next meeting?
Yeah, a lot of those buses come up from Garter for something and I've seen them. And they'll go down Horn and then some of them will go into Schoolfield. Have you ever seen them come to Hermit?
Boy, I do.
Have you seen a few?
Absolutely.
'Cause I haven't been down there at the right time.
Yeah, probably not as many that coming out of the South Country 'cause they do probably cut across. But those that come through town...
Yeah, they'll go there.
I've seen those. But yeah, good, okay. And then I was just looking at your work list, work completed list here. I think you gentlemen have those.
Can I just mention something that Bill and I talked about and we've had this conversation in the past? Just kind of a reminder, Wetmore is interested in getting blacktop on the front of their property. I believe we've had conversations in the past about at some time, if you ever have any extra, that's where we'd like to go. I just want to bring that to your attention. I mean, we had talked about it before, just want to remind you that that was one of the conversations that we've had.
Okay, yeah, and when the conditions allow for it, when they expire back up their plant down there, we'll make sure that site's prepped and when it fits into our schedule.
Great, I don't wanna spend a lot of money. In addition, what I'd like to do is while another project is going on, well, we could do that too.
That's what we talked about.
And expenses, it's gonna be pretty minimal for that, so...
Thank you.
And then I guess the other thing I wanted to bring up to you, Gary, we had talked about it at some point here in the last thirty days or forty-five days and that is safety meetings and recording those and getting those documented. I would like to ask for you to bring those summaries of your safety meetings and include those in your monthly report. I don't know how often you're having those. I don't know what time of the day you're having them or whatever frequency, but I'd like to kinda get that up on the table somewhere and address that.
Frequency of what?
Safety meetings.
We had one last week and what I'd like to do is probably have one every sixty days. And, yeah, I can do that, sure.
You don't see a need because of the nature of these guys' work to have a weekly safety meeting?
No, we, if we had them that frequently, we'd struggle to find something to talk about, honestly, I think. These guys are at that age where if I had an age group from twenty to thirty or twenty to forty even, that has not been around the world like these guys, so to speak. And as experienced as what they are, it might be different, but I think the youngest guy that got work is in his mid-forties, so, and we go clear up to seventies, so they, it's one of them been there, done that kind of things. And they know what it takes to...
And I understand what you're saying. I just don't think that age precludes anybody from getting into a pattern of, I've done it for years. I'm not gonna worry about it.
Well, exactly, and that's why it's important to have them.
I just, I'm really kinda blown away by the fact that this is not an absolute hammered deal, that we're gonna have a safety meeting every Monday or every Thursday or whatever, just because of the nature of the work. I wouldn't expect it in any other department in our county, really, but I was very surprised that we were not hammered. And I'm not discounting what you said about these guys have been doing it for a long time. I get that. I've seen those are operators with thousands of hours of experience, man, get in a major wreck because we just get complacent.
Exactly. And I can see that happening. And that's why it is important to have the safety meetings. But as I'm out and about with these guys, I oversee and look at what's going on and I just... They do a really good job following the safety rules and regulations, so... And when they don't, they care about it, so...
Well, I certainly defer to you because you are the supervisor in that deal. I just want you to know that as a commissioner personally, I think we need to be doing something in that area, certainly more frequently than every quarter or whatever, but yeah.
I would defer to you.
We'll do it at least every sixty days and even more often than that if I feel the need. And if I see something that comes to my attention that needs to be talked about, we'll just, we'll just have one right away, so...
Well, yeah, and obviously, we've had some issues in the last couple of months and things happen. That doesn't mean that they were reckless. I don't mean to suggest that, that those things happen because we weren't having safety meetings. That's not what I'm saying.
True.
All right, very good. What else, sir?
That's all I've got.
Gentlemen, good job.
Did you wanna...
Pardon?
Yeah, we're not done with the agenda.
I thought you wanted to talk to Gary.
Just to really thank you, I just wanted to mention, and we did talk about that a little. You're talking about Bunker Hill Road? Yeah. That he had read the attorney's letter.
Yeah, I just thought you said you wanted to bring it up during his thing.
Oh, okay, gotcha, thank you.
That's why I was just reminding you.
Yeah, and I actually had thought probably the conversation that we had was sufficient then, but that's why I had this look on my face is 'cause I thought, I was comfortable with the discussion we had.
Yeah, I don't know that I've got anything to add at this point, so...
Yeah, I just think we probably need to get educated and get up to speed on it.
That's what I like.
Okay, you wanna, do we wanna let Amy, well, he's here? Okay, you want to, do we want to let Amy, well, he's here.
Yeah, that's what I was just saying.
Talk while he's here, that would be great.
Yeah, I meant, did you have anything else before we moved on to...
No, I'm...
Okay, all right, yeah, then, Miss Amy, I just want to make sure we went through your stuff, Gary, before we, uh, turn the floor over to Amy.
Okay, well, first thing I want to say is, in no way do I want this to construe that we're complaining about Roden Bridge, because we are not. You know, you guys have been just like overtime out at Bear Basin, and it's like, that's actually, I think, what the problem is, is that you having to do that. So we are just so, I mean, you guys are just trying so hard to make that road good, and I just feel like it's costing the county so much to keep that road going.
Amy, you're welcome, I thought we had another chair, must've got ruled out into the...
Oh, it's okay, I can stand for a little bit.
And, and for the record, because you weren't here for audience introductions, this is Amy Finger, and has asked to be on the agenda to speak about, uh, the roads, so you're welcome, we can get you a chair if you prefer.
Oh, I just prefer to stand, thank you. So anyway, I wanted to just thank Roden Bridge for all that they've been doing, and they've been addressing some safety issues that have been problems for years and years and years, and here's a picture of the end result of a wonderful job, well done, on County Road 260. So most people don't realize that we have like five or six miles of county road going right through the ranch, open range, where it's not fenced off from our horses and our cows, and it's 260, it's 271, it's 265, yeah, so...
Thank you.
So it's like huge that, you know, and it's a safety issue for all of our neighbors. So today's issue really doesn't affect Amy and Gary, because we live, you know, a mile off County Road 271, but it affects everyone around us, and of course, everyone comes to us to talk about it. So we're hearing it from Guy Madden, who drives a school bus, we're hearing it from Hal Walter, who comes to pick up his kids, from Dave Bennett, who is the transportation supervisor for the school, saying it's tearing apart their school buses, I mean, everybody comes to us because it's them having to drive through Bear Basin, so I'm sort of representing all these neighbors. But, uh...
What's the issue?
So the issue is this 50 trucks going by every day, and if, and if my understanding is, is that he's got a project that's over with...
Is that the Langston trucks you're talking about?
The Langston trucks, yeah, so...
Well, okay, do you think that's the only trucks, or are there other trucks?
You know, I think that is the only gravel haulers going past, there's certainly other trucks, um, but nothing like that, I mean, that's every 10 or 15 minutes from 8 o'clock in the morning to 5 o'clock at night, and it doesn't stop on Sundays, and even New Year's Day, okay, so...
Yeah, I just want to be careful, if we say 50 trucks, and, and we start saying there's 50 Langston trucks, if that's a fact, that's fine, but if there's other trucks...
Right, but we think it, we think it is, and we've been really observing this for quite some time, um, so like, here's a very telling deal, you know, I mean, so if, what I understand is that he's got a project that's going to be over with before summer, then that, it just kind of solves the issue, and he should keep going with this frequency until he's done, and gets out of there before summertime comes, because the biggest issue is all the people who live next to the road when summer comes, because right now is actually the ideal time to have all these trucks going by, especially if we start to get snows.
And the road freezes up.
Yeah, so I mean, there's absolutely no complaint on our, on anyone's, I think, if this could be done with before summer.
Oh, I absolutely believe that's the case.
Because this, the telling thing about this is that, this is the kind of dust that's created right into these buildings here where people live in the summer, but no one is living there right now.
No, I'm convinced that that's not, it will be done and long gone in another 30 days.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then that is fabulous.
I can certainly ask him, or you can, Gary, if you talk to him.
Yeah, so if he's offering to lower the frequency, that's not the issue, it's be done with it before these people have to live right here.
All right, so let's, uh, let's talk to that.
With that, you can see the problem, I mean, this is like almost a major health hazard.
I agree with your concern.
Well, yeah, and believe me, we all feel your pain, I live on Hermit Road, and we get that exact thing, and we've got, they run out of that pit year round.
Right, but these are young people living like 20 yards from this dust, I mean, this road, it's like...
Yeah, you know, that hasn't happened in the past, and, uh, he's not planning to do, you know, as long as his field gets up and it's an opportunity, what he did, and I think you missed that, was utilize the downtime and keep his guys busy.
Right, okay, so then, another suggestion was that, you know, I understand he's got a place he's coming to in Custer County, but it is so much shorter for him to go up Oak Creek Grade and back down Oak Creek Grade, I mean, it's, the distance is so much shorter, and then, I mean, you need some expert opinion about how easy that is, I mean, I know it's steep, I mean, I drive that thing all the time, um, another trucking friend of ours says that is totally possible with those trucks, and it's like half the distance, or maybe even less.
To that pit, do you know where the pit is, and he's picking up the stuff from?
Well, I know that it's in Florence, from what you just said.
And what part?
And so then, coming up Oak Creek Grade would be, and he's going down Oak Creek Grade into Fremont County, I mean, I thought.
Yeah, I met some of his trucks empty going down the hardscrabble the other day. Now, I don't know if that's a standard practice, I'm just telling you what I observed.
Okay, so what we observe is they come loaded up hardscrabble, down past the ranch, go all the way down what seemed like out of the county, but maybe that's where his property is, is right on the line or something.
It is, it's very near the county.
Okay, and then they come all the way back, and come all the way down the hardscrabble, when they could just be going straight down Oak Creek Grade and out, 15 miles, you know. So I wonder if that's something that could be asked, why...
I certainly have a relationship with him good enough that I can have that conversation.
Oh, there we go, see, it's just such a simple solution, and then...
Well, it may not be a solution, but I can certainly talk to him about that.
He'll have some reason why they do that.
Well, I know the reason why, and that's because they prefer to be on the pavement of hardscrabble than on the gravel road going down the switchbacks. So, you know, but it's, it's, it's something to talk about anyway, because it's such an easy solution, and it's costing Custer County a ton of money to keep the, the roads up.
Yeah, but then those people on Oak Creek Grade are going to come in and say, hey, why did you suggest that? Now we're having to deal with that.
That's all Fremont County.
See, but see, the Fremont County road has already got polychloride on it, I mean, it's like a paved road going down that sucker.
Oak Creek Grade?
Oak Creek Grade is like polychloride, it, well, from the section that we're talking about, it is. On the Fremont County side. Yeah, we're not talking about from Silver Cliff, we're talking about from Boneyard intersection down. It's like incredible, it's like, almost like a paved road.
Yeah, the only thing that's got Durabland or Magchloride on it is the county line, that portion that Fremont County takes care of. That other you're talking about that looks so good, it's because we were out there about two weeks ago and bladed it, and there was snow on it, and it sealed back down tight.
I'm not talking Custer County, I'm talking Fremont County.
Oh, on the county line, then.
Oh, okay, well, I think all the way down, all those switchbacks down, there's amazing road cover.
Oh, you're talking Fremont County?
Yeah, Fremont County.
I was on that yesterday, and that, uh, it's starting to fall apart because of the dry conditions, washboards and things like that, it's not as good as you think.
Well, we just, we came out last week, but, yeah.
A question, maybe a suggestion. If, maybe we can make an agreement with Langston, just says, if, if you think this is acceptable, and I'm not putting work in, that they can use the current route until these folks move into this home, move back here for the summer, and if they still have more to do, then at that time, they would start using Oak Creek Grade, does that sound reasonable?
It sounds reasonable as far as our concerns, but I don't know about your concerns, if that's your business...
My concern is they're ripping up our roads, and we're paying to continue to...
And, and also, we're wondering if this is a private enterprise to, you know, for a private project, didn't he need a permit? Wasn't there a process where neighbors get to say something about, you know, the impact that's going to happen? That never happened?
Not in this situation. If it was a commercial project, it might be different.
If it was in a corporate area, they were doing it, maybe, but...
Okay, so we were never consulted about, all of a sudden, we're going to have 50 trucks a day coming down?
No, but there's no reason why, because you see a problem that, they're good neighbors, and he won't do the right thing, with the talk.
Yeah, I don't know him at all.
That's the right thing to do.
Well, absolutely.
And he is doing it in the off-season with...
Yeah, no, it's a perfect time of year, so he's willing to make an agreement like that, with the realization that, yeah, these are right next to the road, but that still doesn't address the school bus issues and stuff like that, so...
He's ripping up our roads.
Yeah, and then the cost of the county is just, seems huge, and as a taxpayer, I'm like concerned about it.
But he has every right to do it, that's the, he's no different than anyone else in this county that are tearing up our roads with these trucks.
Yeah, well, it's different with 50 bucks, 50 trucks a day, it's a little different than somebody just driving down the road, right?
Yeah, it's more traffic than what we normally see, but by the same token, he's got the right to do it, just like if he decided he wanted to do it.
And we have the right to talk to him, and, and we will, and see what he can work out.
If this was an ongoing issue, I would say maybe we need to talk about, should we establish a policy, a rule, a regulation, something, but I don't think that it rises to that by any means, an isolated incident.
Okay, well, it's just like it's over in a couple of months.
And I agree with you, I don't like having to have that road graded three or four times more often than normally would when our Roden Bridge folks could be doing something else, but I think that's just kind of the nature of the beast, when someone's building a new home, they rip up a road, bring all the material in, and we have to grade more often, and that's just the way it is.
Okay, so one of the things we looked up, just to see what the standards were out there, is, is this linked to Pittsden County, and what their standards are as far as what requirements for permits for doing projects, and, so that's, just a good link, we're cruising through it, and they, you know, it's just a resource.
Yeah, he certainly would not need a permit to do what he's doing. And I'm not trying to minimize your, your concern, Amy, thank you for bringing it to us, uh, I would agree that it's probably increased traffic more than what normally happens out there, but it's certainly not an isolated event, it happens all over the county, and I guarantee you, it happens on Hermit Road continually, year round.
This is the best.
So, uh, but my conversation with Mike was, it certainly, I would feel comfortable saying, within the next month or month and a half, he'll probably be done with that project, but he also said, I'm willing to scale that back if it's causing you an issue.
I would say hurry it up.
Yeah, I would tell him to slow down and...
Yeah, like, you know, 10 more trucks is fine with us, every five minutes, and then just get it done.
Get it done, and I, I...
Yeah, okay, so, you know, we...
Don't bring your concern to us, and don't hesitate to do it again.
Yeah, all right, well, we don't want to, we don't want to complain and like, think, you know, we want even more attention out there, because we don't, we want less attention.
He may start falling altogether if he has a project to put those trucks on.
Sure.
Okay, hey, hey.
Thank you, appreciate you, appreciate you, Brandon.
I remember you now, we were out there working on the cam guard, cleaning the cam guard, when...
Yeah, exactly, all right, that's where we met.
I knew you looked familiar.
Yeah, that was good, you see our horses all over the road all the time.
No, it's not.
Yeah, so that's, you know, it's another always concern, is that somebody's going to, we see, we see people coming across the washboard and wiping out on the side, and we're thinking, oh geez, that's going to be one of our horses one day, but, you know, whatever, it is what it is, horses have to cross from one pasture to the next to get water, go back in to get feed, and we can't like fence it all off.
No.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thanks, Gary.
That's a great work.
Just find a break, this way, you good? Coffee's hitting everybody.
Uh, yeah, we'll take it, sir.
It's always that look that I wonder if there's...
Something going on behind that.
Morning, sir, all right.
Yeah.
These recordings and cameras and stuff.
Breaking you out a little?
We're, we're in the process of hiring a, a person to do makeup for us.
Bring him.
You're going to need a lot of it.
I could use it.
It's a big job.
It's a big job.
All right, sir.
So anyway, we have the, all the totals for 2017. And I always hear you talking about cars and pickups and traffic counts and anything, everything, but we count all the vehicles that go to the landfill too, so you can see the changes. Anyway, it was a good year, 2017 was.
Yeah, I'm surprised the first quarter vehicle counts were higher than the fourth quarter, or were they? No, maybe I'm, no, I guess not, those were the lowest the first quarter, okay, that makes sense to me.
Right.
So I keep thinking about that person who brought a refrigerator or some major item and left them outside the gate, and then came back a few days later and paid you for this, has that occurred again? I mean, that was so weird, I mean, I appreciated that person for at least trying to do the right thing.
Yeah, you know, it happens once in a while, but not very often.
Was it closed when they came, and they just left it?
Yeah, it was a holiday. I forget what holiday that was.
Got to appreciate that spirit.
It was last summer, wasn't it?
Yeah.
At least they came back.
Yeah, that's...
Right.
Yep.
You still had to deal with it, unfortunately, but...
Yeah, because we don't take refrigerators, and so we have to deal with that, is what it is.
Have they, have you heard any more about the wells that are going to be drilled? Or is that still kind of a...
No, I'm just, I'm just thinking it's probably going to happen here real soon, I just haven't heard any more from them, they're definitely doing it, it's just we don't know when.
Still be paid by someone else.
Right. So that's going to be a great thing, get those wells, wells drilled, and they're paying for it, is what I like.
I sat in on a CDHPE Steering Committee Legislative Meeting in Denver, and a couple of the, uh, Crowder was there, Senator Crowder, and they were talking about, and they really had a real frank discussion about, CDHP needs to back off of these landfills, and let them function, and quit passing all these restrictions, and then just offering no help, and then just start banging these small counties over the head with these laws, and they sit right there and said, you know what, you're right, we have done this, we need to take another look at how we're going to approach this. It started with the closures, the post-closure treatment of these, but they got around to dealing with, or talking about, current landfills that are operating, and just not trying to hammer us to death, and I appreciated that and told them that, that I thought that, at least coming from our small county, I think we're doing a great job, but we've got to quit getting beat up with all these stinking threats of litigation and, and fines and so on and so forth.
Right, I think they're, they actually are trying to help, so that's refreshing, actually.
It is, I felt good about it.
Right? You know, and they're going away because they were charging us everything we sent them, it was $125 an hour for them to read anything.
We had that discussion, and I'm telling you, those county commissioners got up in the middle of them and said, this is ridiculous.
Right, because, you know, the, okay, we want you to send this report to us, this is what you have to do, you have to send this report to us, and then we're going to charge you for reading that.
Yeah.
So, anyway, they're backing off on a lot of those things, so that's, that's a good thing.
You got a good relationship with them.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, real well.
That's a good question on your report, um, you have the fee paid, what are extra fees, what is that, what would that entail?
Tires, appliances.
Oh, when you charge in addition to their back...
Treelims, all those kinds of things.
Thank you.
Cardboard sales, we knew we were just under 20,000 for that, huh?
All right, and actually, he got another check because we did send the load out in December, late December, and so he'd get, get another check.
Not reflected here.
Right, I think 2,000 something, so that would be a little more.
Good. Um, these blue recycled bags, those come from, uh, oak disposal, that's where you[1751.12] Good. These blue recycled bags, those come from oak disposal. That's where you can go and buy those. That has nothing to do with us other than keeping that material out of the landfill.
Right.
Which is huge, in my opinion.
Right. It's a big help.
But she, she recycles that through somebody else, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, she has a vendor cup.
Uh, and it's a kind of a two-edged sword. I'd really like to see the county get behind that whole idea because we have done that.
It's all over out there.
Personally, and, and it's, to me, it's not the money end of it. It's the amount of material that's gotta be going into the landfill. I mean, if you take the material that we've put in a bag over, or bags over 30 days and multiply that by the number of family units in this county, would have to be significant.
Sure.
Granted, we don't mash it all down like you guys would if it ended up in the landfill with your compactor, but.
So what are you asking Tom?
Well, I'm not asking anything. I'm saying that I would like to see the county promote recycling and keeping this stuff out of our landfill.
The more we keep that, the better off we are.
Yeah, I think she gets, she charges $3 a bag for those blue bags. Not everything except cardboard is my understanding. And obviously if cardboard comes to you guys, that does get recycled in the county.
Right.
Correct.
And they do have a roll-off container at Oak Disposal that people bring their cardboard over there and then they haul that out to us on Fridays.
Right. Yeah.
And they haven't charged anything for doing that. It's kind of nice of them to do it then.
Seems like you're getting a pretty good turnout of people doing.
Lot of cardboard recyclers.
Yeah. Which is way cool. I'm thinking about volume in our landfills.
You bet.
That's.
Yeah, it really helps us out.
Good. Good, good.
And this other is just, uh, this is the fourth quarter report that I sent to Colorado Department of Health.
Well, does that, it's not, don't send?
Every quarter, right, every quarter, we send this report to the state of Colorado and send them a check. So every vehicle is nine cents per vehicle.
Oh, be darned. I didn't know that. Okay.
Pickups, trailers, that kind of thing, 18 cents. And Oak Disposal is at 35 cents for every cubic yard they bring out.
And that's the state charging us at that rate?
Right.
It's criminal.
And so, you see, by the end of the year, we're sending them checks for, I mean, grand total, probably between $4,000 and $5,000 every year.
And then paying them 125 bucks an hour to talk to them on the phone. I guarantee you it's just.
And you, you and I talked about oak disposal and they're getting a break for some historic break because of, and you need to explain this to Tom and Jay, that we may or may not necessarily need to be given. Is that what you're thinking, Rusty?
Well, I think we need to keep up with what Colorado Department of Health is charging us.
Right. And so what do, what do they?
So they're at $8.30 and so we're only getting $7.95.
So we're subsidizing Oak to drop it.
And so in the end, see, we paid, let's see if I have that figure here somewhere. We paid Colorado Department of Health $3,400 just for Oak Disposal to come to our landfill last year.
And what's the revenue on that? We paid 34. What do we get from them?
We're paying, we're, it's a dollar difference, right?
Yeah, so.
Say it again.
So you see, we got, we pay, we charge them $8.30 a cubic yard.
Okay.
The state gets 35 cents out of that.
Right. So we're really in essence charging, we're getting 7.95.
7.95.
Okay.
And so in 2017, they, they brought out 9,783 cubic yards. We paid 35 cents for every cubic yard. That's 3,424, $3,424 that we paid Colorado Department of Health.
See that, when it got set up and originally, there was a way to incentivize people to use their garbage cans at the house, getting picked up by a truck and all that so that it would be paid for. I don't think with, now that we've got things rolling, I don't know why we, we still need to subsidize oak.
See, just in this fourth quarter, they, they brought out 2,331 cubic yards and we paid 815.85.
All right, I'm a little dense. Just explain to me the subsidy that we're giving them. Where is that? We're charging them 8.30. I recognize of that, we're paying back to the state 35 cents. Is that the subsidy, the 35 cents? Is that what we're referring to? What, I don't understand what this subsidy is that we're giving them.
Tell them what, what Joe Blow pays, what do we?
This is what happened in the beginning is that the county just decided to help out local business at the landfill and so they were charging the trash companies a different rate than what you would pay to come to the landfill.
Gotcha.
So when you come to the landfill with a cubic yard, it's gonna cost you $10.
I got it. Okay, so they're getting it at 8.30 and everybody else pays 10.
Right.
I got it. They're getting a discount.
Right.
That's what I didn't, that's what I wasn't.
Yeah. Reasonable in my thinking. I mean, how would you like to have to deal with that many vehicles bringing in their trash versus Oak Disposal bringing it in?
Exactly.
How many yards in one of those trucks typically?
Their biggest truck is 25.
25. So, yeah, I mean, you're locking another 50 vehicles to make up for one trash truck.
Yeah, we can't.
So.
Then you're talking big time safety issues with that.
I don't look like it, as, as we're subsidizing them, obviously they have a discounted rate versus an individual, one bag at a time user. That's reasonable business practice.
And it's just gonna flow back. If we went to Oak and said, we're raising your fee at $1.70, I'm certain, not certain, but I would bet my bottom dollar that my personal rate would go up accordingly. I mean, it would just get paced on. So I'm not sure this is accomplishing anything if we raised it. I mean, just my thought.
Yeah, we just need to keep up with Colorado Department of Health what they're charging the landfill.
Right.
Because it's, it's expensive to run.
And I think if they raise their fees, it's certainly appropriate to go back to Oak at that time.
You have to share it.
Yeah, I absolutely agree with that, but I don't think charging them the same as me bringing my one black bag today for two bucks that I gave you, which I'm happy to do.
You must be the only one. Everybody else complains about it.
I don't mind it at all. I mean, what else am I gonna do with that?
Well, it's convenient.
It's certainly convenient.
Sure.
People who work there are wonderful. I mean, I forgot his name, who always greets me. No problem whatsoever. Nice man.
There's a fine line. You have to be very careful because you can't drive it into the market.
Absolutely agree with you. When I first moved here, we would, they would say just drive it down the ditch and dump and drive back out. And I'd come out with two flat tires and who knows what else. No, this is a great way it's going now.
Yeah, you know, I mean, if that's the conversation in the direction we want to go, then we're looking at 27 cents between private vehicles. Same thing, you know, if we're, if the thought is we're subsidizing Oak Disposal, we're subsidizing non-commercial vehicles and, because we're paying for theirs as well.
Yeah, I think that it's probably something that we could sure look at in the workshop that we're gonna have.
Oh, really? Do you have my calendar? I haven't set yet.
Well, back in December 5th, we were gonna do that.
I know.
After the 1st of the year.
I remember. Let's get a calendar. Let's, you wanna find a date now or do you wanna get back with us?
Anytime. Anytime that the commissioners are freed up.
I could get my calendar up.
About the afternoon of the 28th.
Talk about expansion. We can hash out quite a few things.
Yeah.
We have the last day of February. We have a BSC. I would be happy to do it that afternoon if it works for you guys.
Fine by me.
Okay, let's write it down.
One o'clock?
One o'clock and let's go.
I would think, don't you, Brenda, we should be done before noon, so.
What are you asking her for? We gotta be careful what we say.
It's us, not her.
It's us, not her.
Well, she's in charge of the agenda.
So what is the date?
Uh, 28th, last day of February.
Let's put it down for one, if that's acceptable.
Yeah, it's for me.
And if we have to change. We're gonna meet.
Right here.
Here.
Rusty might want to service his office.
Well, I was thinking we could maybe include a tour at the end of that.
That'd be great.
I would love to do that.
I don't want to sit out there and have the entire workshop.
That would really, really, really be helpful.
Let's do that. Let's plan on a tour.
Let's do it.
A courtroom and then a tour to follow.
Yep.
Okay? I don't think I'd ask everybody. Uh, we don't really subscribe to Harb hats in this county, apparently.
Stop it.
Obviously.
So this other information, I can't wait for that.
Guaranteed.
Do you guys have a copy of these, what we charge?
No.
At the landfill?
Mm-hmm.
I have one.
That's a good one.
If you have enough.
You got three of them?
I do.
I'm sure. Like, my copies?
Yeah.
Can I get a copy of that?
Yeah. Ms. Brenda?
Absolutely.
Could we get two, three copies of that document, please? Mr. Smith could have one and probably three, actually. Three copies.
Put that in both papers last year.
Did you want a copy of this report?
Yeah, I'd love one, so I can.
No, I'm just gonna give it to Brenda so she can make a copy.
Yeah, I was gonna pass it to her.
Oh, okay. Thought you were trying to take mine.
I was.
I need to know about the landfill.
Yeah.
Why'd you flag out lawnmowers separately?
Lawnmowers. Oh, yeah, we don't.
You don't, you just said no gas.
To be determined.
DVD. You got a lot of people dumping lawnmowers out there?
Yeah, people bring out their old lawnmowers and it's kind of hard to charge for them because people come by and they, they take them and rebuild them or it's really, they're really not wrong.
Get parts or whatever.
Get parts off of them.
Set up a swap meet out there.
Yeah, could, pretty easy.
Um, so if somebody were gonna bring out four or five batteries, you'd have somebody inspect them?
Yeah, we, we check them out before they drop them off. You still find things, you know, in the landfill itself and people try to hide things, you know, all that time.
Yeah.
I hope you're not finding bodies or worse, body parts.
No.
He's got it.
The people you got.
You got it too?
Yeah, I was, I've given you mine.
I've had them in the past where they threw things away that they didn't mean to throw away and some of it was kind of expensive and would you try digging that up?
Good night.
Once it's covered and you go to digging in there, that's not a fun thing.
Yeah, this is interesting. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hey, before you go, so we got a letter from John Rice about buying land. How, how close are you out there to using up what space we have?
You know, we have, there's 100 and whatever, 60 acres, whatever it is, the county owns right there. The designated landfill area that we're in right now is 21 acres. And so we can go out beyond that.
So you can project based on what we've been using, what the, how long it's gonna take to get to a position where we have to look for something else?
It'd be some years. Because Road and Bridge, their gravel pit, when they're finished over there, we could actually go over there.
Really?
Yeah. The only, the only thing about that is, is they, they have to reclaim it. When they're finished over there with their gravel pit, they have to reclaim that area. And then if we go over there, we get to tear it all back out.
So could you program, could you plan to do that before they reclaim it and turn it into?
I think the permit that they actually have from the state is that that has to be reclaimed to get it okayed and closed with the land reclamation people.
But there may be a way that they would waive.
I'll bet some commissioners could.
If we dealt.
Talk to them about that.
But I mean, that would be silly. Waste the money.
Right.
But then that's the government.
Yeah, they go in there, you know, and, and we've already claimed quite a bit over there. And I noticed that Gary and those guys have done a little more in the bottom of that pit because they want, they want you to keep reclaiming as you go, so there's not such a huge area in the end.
Big, big open pit.
Right.
Yeah, I would guess probably part of the thinking would be that there's no guarantee on CDHP's behalf that if they didn't re, or if they, if they didn't reclaim it, does that mean that the landfill would use everything or should they reclaim it all and we just dig up what we're gonna use so that we do have some of it reclaimed? It would be my thinking that it doesn't make sense to reclaim it and then come right in and tear it up. If it was gonna do all of it.
Right.
I'd say commissioner's honest to all about that, but if it's just gonna be a strip initially for eight months or a year, I'm sure they'd want that reclaimed, everything around it, all of that space around it, so.
See, even if they reclaim it and we went in there and stripped that topsoil back off, at least that's something that we'll be able to use again.
Yeah. It's a duplicated effort, but.
Right.
And the EPA is okay with that? We don't have to have monitoring wells and all that kind of nonsense?
There will have to be some over there.
Okay.
When they, if we ever get to that point, which is years down the road.
Perfect. Because we've, we've talked about this before, running out of room in the landfill. Been worried about it. I know you have, you have a couple of strips left that we can do.
And you did, you did note, I guess, that it's accelerated or what you thought it was gonna be.
Right. And, you know, you talked to Sam Donardo and we're right on track with what they thought it was gonna be in the beginning. 35, 40 years, whatever it was. But anyway, we're, he says you're right on track with what's going on, so that's a good thing to know.
So how far are we into the 35 year?
Well, we have six years left.
Six years to go.
And it will be full. But see, now I had a thought, which we'll talk about in our workshop, and I talked to the state of Colorado, our permitting person from the state. We could actually, the trenches that we're in, when they're filled to ground level, we could actually start going up.
Mound in those, yeah.
So you could go up another.
Really?
10, 12 feet. The only problem with that is the wind. It'd be kind of hard to contain that, that trash being at the ground level like that. But that's a possibility that we could.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of landfills are going above ground instead of below ground. That one up by DIA, oh my gosh.
Right.
I don't know how much of that's below ground, but I suspect most of it's above ground.
It's all above ground.
Huge, huge.
Yeah, and when I talked to them, in fact, I just talked to her last week and she said, yeah, we don't, we don't have a problem with that. If you need, need to do that, that's another possibility. At least even if you went up five or six feet, you know, until you saved the money to expand to the other area.
Short-term.
So at least you.
Approach, yeah.
We'd gain a three or four more years.
How deep do you normally cut those trenches when you go up to 20?
20 feet. 93 feet wide on top, 33 feet in the bottom. I used to take those a little straighter, those side walls, but they decided that the slope needs to be more so they don't cape in on anybody.
Yeah, I mean, if you went eight feet high, that's another third, that's 33% more efficiency on a 20-foot trench.
Right.
If we keep it in place.
See, I have.
Enough dirt to do this? Go up there, huh? Cover it?
Yeah.
Well, I'll look forward to this workshop. That'll be, be interesting.
The only problem is, yeah, we'll have to talk about that one. It is a possibility, though.
Yeah, and we can talk about John Rice's proposal to us at some time, too, because he's, he's got some consider, you know, he's considering trading the right-of-way for some land and that kind of thing, extend it, because he wants to have, he thinks that county road or the, what they're using to get the gravel out and give it right-of-way to his, the rest of his place.
Oh.
So that's something to look at pieces, see what it extends it by, what kind of deals we can make.
We're interested.
Look at all, look at prospects.
They probably own all that country.
Maybe.
So.
I don't remember the acreage, but.
It's 160, this is what she wants to deal with, but he's got.
Oh, directly south.
South end to the west.
Oh, okay.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of it.
Yeah, I don't know if you're worried that. He sent a letter to the commissioners wanting to sell us some land.
Do they own Colorado 2118 or Rice Road, like we always call it?
Yes. But I understand.
Yeah, I don't know. I haven't looked up a map, so.
So anyway, something to think about before he sells it to somebody that'll want to scam Anyway, something to think about before he sells it to somebody that'll wanna scam us when we really want it. It depends on what we're gonna do in the meantime, cuts some right-of-way. But we can talk about it.
Yeah, yeah, most definitely. That's about all I have, I believe.
Good job, thank you.
Yes, thanks for coming in. I'll follow the theme that I talked with Gary. Do you do any safety training out there since you have equipment running?
Yeah, we do, once a month.
Can you document or are you documenting that so we have a paper trail?
That's something that the inspector checks every time they come out. They come out once a year and they always wanna know that.
Yeah.
Training, safety.
At your next monthly report, can you just include a...
Sure.
A sample of that, the most recent one or something, so we can look at it.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
And we have Safety Monday, they call it Safety Money Monday. It's a, it's just a sheet that comes out from Swan, they send it out.
Topics.
And just get that off the computer and hand those out to everybody and every week it's different.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be rocketized, just something to keep it on the front of your mind.
Right, just so everybody's got it in the back of their mind, you know, to keep...
Exactly.
Keep it going.
Yeah, okay.
So hopefully it helps. How's so far?
Good, yeah. Well, and in the event something goes south on us... We need to be able to document that and say we've had regular safety training and these are the topics we've covered and you may or may not cover that topic that caused the problem, but we gotta show intent that we were making an effort to try to operate that in a safe manner and keep our employees...
And I buy videos, I bought a couple more last year from Blue Ridge Services, which is a safety landfill company that actually do CDs. And so we watch those, they're not very long, but gives us something to look at.
Okay.
Loader, safety, you know, compactor, safety, on and on, landfill safety, landfill basic, safety.
Good.
That's a good thing.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Okay, you bet.
Look forward to the workshop, that'll be...
Your next trip, Bill.
Okay.
Thanks for coming in, sir.
You bet, sir.
See you, Rusty. Hey, Donna's on her way.
Thank you, Ms. Brenda. I would be remiss to him when I'll bring it up. I think we're, we're falling short of the mark in Roden Bridge when it comes to safety training for these employees. I don't care how long they've been here, anything can happen. So Bill, I'd like for you, if you don't mind, to at least have a conversation, follow up with...
Yeah, absolutely.
Gary and...
See what he's got.
Maybe we can check with other counties to see what they're doing or...
No, it's, they have OSHA requirements they have to conform with anyway.
You know, I've never been around heavy equipment as a, as an enterprise or commerce that there didn't, there wasn't a law of regular safety meeting. We get somebody killed, they're gonna wanna know our safety regulations.
No, when we were running the sawmill, it required once a week, you know, just equipment, quick one.
And even if he's trying to find something, I know, having worked in a refinery, OSHA puts out so much literature, even if you don't have a specific topic on point, you could take an OSHA topic and talk about something.
Well, and what they do do, they hang that stuff, it's hanging all around there, but what they do is make sure you just say, "Remember this," and they, they got it the week before and then three, two weeks later, it doesn't take that long. I'll talk with Gary.
Yeah, I'm just not comfortable with the every sixty-day thing, I don't wanna get into big conflict. Gary, right here, because we haven't had a chance to talk to him.
Monoc got several, several inches, kind of an involuntary...
I understand. Thanks, saying hi. Take care, everybody.
I'll push for once-a-week safety meetings, we're crazy not to have them.
No, I agree. And if there's, I, I concur with you. First of all, I'm worried about the safety of our people, but also I'm worried about if heaven forbid we have an accident, the liability that we could face, but we might be worth facing, so it's a really good idea. Look who...
Yeah, all right, we'll move on. Human Resources Finance Guru is here.
Yay. Hi.
Hello. Sorry. I got a, I got a knuckle caught in there, didn't I? Sorry about that. How are ya?
Not bad, how about y'all?
Really well, thank you. Sorry, we're behind schedule this morning.
What else is new?
Well, I'm here for the day, so all good, there you go.
Yeah, you didn't have to get out and warm the vehicle up to come over, did you?
Uh-uh, I did not.
And you and your clips, you got a good one.
And I just finished this morning, so those are, well, they were warm the first time I came over, now they've been outside twice, so...
Yeah, you came over once already, didn't you? Ms. Kelly? I was gonna ask you if you could move down the hall because of recording.
We'll move her down, and she's, he's our recorder.
We have visited with Mr. Hyde this morning during his monthly report and asked him to touch base with you to see if we had a process in place for the dispensation of used vehicles. Or putting them out on bid versus selling them versus trading them in.
It just has to be fair and equitable. If it's between outside landy and it, we've done it several different ways and, and none have worked, been more efficient or less. It just has to be open and above board so that everybody gets a chance.
Not a set number of times, we need to advertise a sealed bid opportunity in the newspaper.
The other thing I would suggest is probably both newspapers maybe or, and then the website and, and, you know...
Once or twice. We don't have a, any ordinances or guidelines in place to say you have to advertise it three times or whatever.
No, we do not.
I'm sure he'll follow up with you on that.
Oh, see, and I'll be back. I got it, I do that every time, Kel.
So this is through the thirty-first of January, obviously.
What are we looking at and what are we...
Those are just the financials. Just, just the normal.
How are we doing?
In January, we're great.
Okay. So I gotta ask the next question, of course. And after that?
We're doing fine.
We don't have a year-to-date on these, do we, as we progress through the year?
Yes, it does. When I read these, it would, yeah, it would do, just since we're on our first one, that...
That column will...
Yes, it will populate.
Thank you. And the percentages are percentage used, I'm assuming?
It depends whether on revenue or expenditures.
Good work, thank you. Yeah, this is the expenditure.
And the insurance fund is probably a little frightening, I would think. But it's always, I mean, that always happens. Thanks, Kel.
I had a quick one, Don, when I should've asked him before you came in. The landfill, we have fees. Are we also, is there also dollars that are out of the general fund that are part of what subsidizes the landfill or is it all just the fees generated?
Is, the landfill is located in the general fund, so if it were to be short, it would be...
Right.
That's the only reason that it's, we've not made it its own fund in the past is because we found that we probably have to transfer money in.
Sure, because your, your taxes as a homeowner up here, you, you, part of that would include, like it always has, trash, something. So what we try to do is the landfill, we haven't been tapping the general fund in the past?
Is last year, I am going to say Rusty broke even or maybe made a little profit.
Okay, so in the past, it was a little...
Yeah, and, and, and that being said, the closure cost, he could not absorb that. That is, and, and we really don't have it saved back, which the auditor said we didn't need to have it saved back, but that could be a half a million dollar expense if that, if we had to do a closure right now.
But there would be no reason to do that.
No, but, but, you know, when it's a fund, I think that, that that closure cost might have to be integrated in there. I, I, not positive, but it, that might be...
Is there anything here that you wouldn't need to bring to our attention that is not jumping out at us?
No, just the insurance, if you look at it and we're...
Where is it?
Uh, it's Fund Forty. I am not sure the page, I did not bring. But it was a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars went out of that, just in the premiums.
First of the year.
Correct, and then I had almost eleven thousand on unemployment.
Seventeen.
But that unemployment reimbursement hit, and so we're showing over, but I believe the auditors will reclassify that back to 2017 because those costs were incurred in 2017, but the bill did not come until January. So it looks worse than it is.
So the county's on a cash basis?
On our unemployment, yes, we, we reimburse, we're self-funded.
Surprised me. Okay. Nothing else out of line? This really isn't even out of line, it's just probably an adjustment that needs to be made, is it?
Yes, and, and it would, I mean, the unemployment, until they've paid through December, they don't know what we need to reimburse, so I couldn't have the bill at that time.
Good to me. Is this something we need a motion to accept or is this just a...
No, that's just been, it just happened to be this day that I had them done.
And we've expended some money on the Conservation Trust Fund, correct?
Correct, thirteen thousand, yes.
No big movement on capital improvement to this point, what you're applying, huh?
No, Rusty will, the loader repair will come out of there February. Loader? I'm not sure what it was, something.
It's the loader.
Loader, okay, thank you.
So is Mr. Paquette still on retainer and helping?
Well, he is still doing human services, so we've kinda gotten a, a thing where we kinda swap out. I, I do his, I post his stuff for him and then he looks mine over so that I can feel, we both can feel good. He doesn't have to stay here and sit and look at it and do it, and he can peek at mine so that I feel good about it, so... I don't know what we'll do when he leaves with that CFMS. I mean, it's just, it's like just a big gigantic grant, all of the human services, you know, pass-throughs and all that, and it's more complicated than I would like to try to, to mess with.
A question probably for you and Brenda. I'm looking at the general fund on page eleven. I see we paid our dues to CCI, that check went out, correct? Because there was some angst over that. And then, let me look in case I'm missing it here, we also have historically, oh, there it is, no, land use dues for CCI, I'm sorry.
And the reason I did not pay those maybe January fifth or sixth is we needed tax collection to cover those. And because they are big and, and I know that every county, I'm not sure why they were so abrupt with us because every, even our insurance is due one-one, but I can't mail it until the thirty-first because we're a zero-based budget and I would...
You gotta have the money in there to pay it.
Pay it in, so...
So we did pay the land use dues, four ninety-nine.
Correct.
I wonder why we budgeted sixteen hundred in that? That's a fixed number, we know what that dues structure's gonna be.
Because last year it was more.
Oh, it was?
Mm-hmm. They reduced it this time and I, and I don't know why. I based those numbers on the prior year.
Huh, yeah, I'll, I'll talk to you about that. It could be, well, they haven't reduced the, they haven't reduced the assessment percentage yet, have they? From seven-one to six-nine, mm-hmm.
I think that goes, it's on this year's? Is it in this year's? Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that, yeah.
Maybe that's the difference, I don't know.
Where was that, Tom?
The land use dues, we pay separate dues, line seven twenty-four. We are a land use dues-paying county, not every county is, we are. On page eleven, Bill, line seven twenty-four, budgeted sixteen hundred and, and all along it was, from the paperwork I've seen, was scheduled to be five hundred dollars. But if that's what we paid last year, that's...
But I, I can run a historical on that, but I, I would've, I would've nodded my defense that I don't need one, but I wouldn't have just made that number up. I'd have just used from before.
Yeah, I figured somebody stuck that number in there and, interesting. Okay. We do have ten thousand budgeted in affordable housing, so I'm assuming that's...
That's, that's for that grant, I mean, that study that's going on, that's fifty-fifty grant.
Okay. Okay.
Have you been in the West Virginia County Attorney Association?
I have not.
Okay, but you got, that'll just come to you, right?
Well, sometimes it'll come to you. They used to go to John Naylor half the time and Debbie a fourth of the time and me the fourth of the time, so...
But I won't pay it myself, I promise.
Okay. I don't blame you, yeah, it's, it's pretty...
Expense accounts.
And then the check to eat, that'll go out at the end of the month as normal, or are we gonna run that mid-month?
It was in this that you just signed.
Perfect, thank you. It's a twenty-two fifty. I got my face, I guess I don't...
Well, I was trying to think of a nice way, I said, "No." You guys are grilling me, I'll just let out there.
That's right. Good.
Good job.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Oh, much better.
And your hands aren't cold, and that's good.
Oh, yeah, no, I know, that's because I have three layers.
Hey, have you noticed a difference in your office air temperature?
I believe it is, but it is much better without that door in the breeze.
Thank you.
Do you know, the last time I knew she was in Vermont and...
I see OEM is up next. I don't know, Cindy is planning on coming or not?
Yeah, I mean, she's scheduled right now, so...
I don't have Alan's birthday, it was yesterday.
Okay, and I haven't heard it.
Well, I don't know. Ten-thirty, what time is it?
Have you had a communication with Cindy?
No.
Okay. All right. Let's move on then, we can come back to that. Anything else under staff report that you're aware of, or obviously we don't have any other staff here?
One thing I do wanna mention, Tom, and I should've done it when Gary was here, but I've been working with him. In the past, he's only loaded several lines, if you go through the, and take a look at how they're loaded. Like on snow and ice removal, they're always zero, they were zeros and they're still, the categories are the same as the ones above it, below it. So I asked him to break it out and manage the budget like you would expect him to, and that is put dollars in the categories. If it's gas and oil, what's the projected amount you're gonna need this year? If it's tires, what's it projected? If it's salaries, which are separate, those are all taken care of. Probably had last year, he just leaves them in as one lump sum and it's hard to see the breakout and how you're spending through the year, and I wanna see it by the month. And I wanted to see, all right, we're running, we haven't been using snow and ice, so that, whatever he's allocated for snow and ice removal hasn't been hit right now. And, fine, but now, in two months from now, maybe, maybe we get a big blizzard. And at least you know your spend rates and you can take a look at the other items and say, "Well, you haven't been spending anything for printers," I mean, something silly. But you can move money around. Last year, the, the perception was there was money we had to get at the end of the year, which was there already, it was in the budget. We just, we just, the way we are allocating it looked like it was a, something that was either overlooked or hidden or whatever, so I wanted to get it out to where we can see it by the month, how, what the spend rate is and say, again, if we wanted to make a decision on moving some money out of the chains and tires group because we're not spending it into whatever the gas and oil maybe we're working in. And manage the budget like you would manage a checkbook.
Yeah, and I would think a percentage column on there, just like Donna does, you know... we expended 33% of our fuel budget so far.
And so he's done that, he's actually categorized it better, and he's got tires and, you know, all that in there. You look at the other rates, you know, he's, and we're strapped with a category that the state has laid on them, and so you can't fill them all out anyway. But it would be better, I don't care, internally, it's, you've got one lump sum, and we know where the income comes from, and we're gonna track it as we're spending it.
Looking for that document now.
Can I bring something else up that we heard of yesterday that really kind of shocked me? Apparently, there's a state statute that road and bridge needs to report to the state, not only on how much, was it fuel they used, and what their projected fuel for the following month would be? Remember Dennis talked about that yesterday? He mentioned that, and I was sitting there going, gosh, I've never heard of that. Do you remember that clip, like, chances?
I don't remember.
I'll tell you what, let me find that, and I'll send it to you, Bill. It may be nothing, it's something you're already doing, but I remember sitting there going, whoa.
So you're saying that this document we have here, which is obviously his budget, I'm assuming this is 2018, but you know, 2017. So...
So he's breaking out the categories, base, road basin, gravel, you know, culverts, $20,000 bucks. He may or may not use that, and that as we get closer to the end of the year, where are they, where are we hurting in other categories and we needing to move money out of one into the other? He can do that, but now we have the visibility, and you can track it, instead of saying, well, I know we've got one big lump sum over here we've been keeping, and we'll spend it eventually. The idea is to show the voters of this county that the mill levy on what they expected to be spent on road and bridge is being spent that way. And that every dime, we want to spend every dime we can and not have something sitting and rolling into the next year if we could be fixing a road, whether we have enough money to do it. And one of those that he brought up, there's an opportunity probably to lay some asphalt when we start doing this, on the Oak Creek grade, there's two miles that we'll probably be able to afford if we're watching the dollars as we go through the year, and be able to fix it more permanently. So anyway, he likes...
I see he hasn't carried any of those over for January, so he hasn't filled out it for January.
No, he hasn't filled out what he's spent yet, because he just, he needs to tally that up and see where we're spent.
No, I think it's a great idea, we need, in every department, we need to be looking at any given month and say, okay, where are we at for the year to date?
Right, and then, you know, because you may have something come up and say, well, what can we, where can we go move, and I did talk, as I mentioned before, to the auditor down in Quinlan. And we can move things from, easily up and down on funds, and we can also move things across funds that are, we consider the certain restrictions that are there, you can't do it in some cases. But you audit, we have the visibility, and if we keep tracking it by the month, or, you know, it's easier to deal with an emergency than try to figure where we're gonna get if something came up. Or we overspent because of some reason. So right now, we're really doing pretty well, I think, actually, what we got budgeted and what they're spending.
Have we tried to contact Cindy?
Yeah, did you hear what Donna said?
I'm sorry, I did not, apologize.
That she's, she thinks she's in Vermont and she might be stuck there.
That might be a long ride.
Vermont, the state, or Verdumont, the...
Vermont, yeah.
Well, if we're gonna wait for her, we'll be here for...
She did send some documents to us in our packet, if you had a chance to get to those. I hadn't looked at them, I'm holding them up just now, but...
I don't know what's new from what we've talked with her in the last meeting we had. Not obvious.
Yeah, I looked at it, but, you know, I didn't study it because I expected her to.
Right, that's, I saw that we got it, and I let it go at that as well, so, well, we'll move on. Yes, sir.
We'll bring it up when she's available, we'll put her back on the agenda if that's acceptable.
Yeah, you want to make a motion to that, for the record, sir?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that, because the administrator for the emergency office, emergency office management is not here, that we postpone her report until she's available and then add it to the agenda at that time.
Yeah, whenever that is.
You okay, we need to order table instead of postpone?
Yeah, we'll table it, I'm sorry.
That's okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moving to second to table the OEM monthly report until the manager is available. Any discussion? Hearing no, proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries, we'll table that, thank you. Old business, the amended resolution from the fire department.
What changed?
They added...
Point it out if you want.
Yes, please.
Down under the "now, therefore" part of it, use of premises, is that sentence, the last sentence there, any vehicle belonging to the Wet Mountain Fire Protection District that is parked in the Center Bay Center shall be off limits to any persons not authorized, or are not authorized personnel. And then the next one, access to airport premises, same thing, the last sentence, the personnel shall be permitted to use the restroom facilities in the building. Those were the only two changes. I move that way, except the amended changes to the...
No, I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve the amended IGA with Wet Mountain Fire Protection District and the county, discussion?
And that's all these highlighted areas and so all that we discussed, yeah.
And then, obviously, it's an amended lease agreement now on the very last...
Resolution number 18-01 to be amended.
Oh, okay, I'm good with that.
Hearing no further discussion, we'll proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. The resolution 18-01 has been amended. Thank you, ma'am. And do we... It's not fair!
What's that?
It's not fair for me to ask Brenda if she would print that out so we could sign it when I hear her printer running already, so.
Let's step ahead as always.
Tap of the gavel and the action is happening.
Yeah, it hasn't removed the watermark and had it...
Wow!
And the assessed valuation doesn't come in until after the budget's done, so it's whatever, and that's where the 16 was two years ago, that was on there, and it has... That's what made the difference.
So it is that assessed valuation driving down.
Last year was 712, but it used to be 2,300.
Yeah. Well, that's foundation, that's different than land use, but...
Well, the foundation use are 12, and, I mean, there are a few...
Oh, those were combined, 2,100 was combined.
That's land use. We've had much bigger assessed valuations in the past.
Right, yeah, it keeps ratcheting down.
500 to 2,300, so.
Yeah, I guess, it doesn't matter, it just didn't, it looked like in 2014, there was CCI foundation and land use dues, both combined, or no?
It could have been.
Looks like it probably was.
They say land use on all of them.
We, but, no, the CCI dues are 12,000, or 10 or 12.
12.
So what is this then, Tom?
Those are just the land use dues.
Well, yeah, let's just talk about 2018, because that's what...
Okay, so you're only looking at land use.
Right, the rest is just record.
Not the...
The land use dues is $499.
Right.
Yeah, we've already paid the CCI dues. So, but it's interesting to see it's gone down.
Well, and the difference is if they can still change that assessed valuation like the day that budget needs to be mailed to the state, that's how close it could come. So I don't think I would ever just put the 500 in there, because, I mean, yay if it would go up.
So you would recommend we budget more than that?
More having available, anyway.
Yeah, wow, yeah, so it must be tied to the assessed valuation.
I just want to remember that this is a voluntary membership that we have, correct?
Correct, we do not have to pay those dues. Obviously, we have, because we have a lot of national forests, a creek in our county.
I'm not suggesting anything.
No, but it's not required, that's right.
Just wanted to make sure that that is not ignored.
Yeah, thank you for that, appreciate it.
And on CCI, the best thing about them is if I were to send out a letter and ask, you know, whether the county's due, they will pull more than likely, almost every county, to give us an answer.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, I hope we budgeted a long time for public comment, which is next on the agenda.
Okay, Ms. Kelly?
Thank you.
Anything else under old business, gentlemen, that you're aware of?
God for me, sir.
New business?
I don't have anything.
Me neither. Mr. Bill?
No, all I would like to do is take a couple minutes, since we're still in session here. We got anything else to talk about?
I do not, under new business, no.
All right, I want to follow up on how you started off this meeting, and I'll wrap it up. I want to point out to everybody that we're a team. I'm not Bob Katnick, I'm not Donna Hood, I'm not Jay, I'm not Tom, but we're here together. And so if for some reason you get, you think that something's happening that I have said, or Tom has said, or somebody, I don't care who it is, come to me and ask me, and I'll come to you as well, because there's no way, even though I'm a rookie, I'm not stupid, and I'm not gonna ever think that I have the authority to make a decision that it takes three of us to do, period. And when, when they came to me originally, they said, here's the rough draft, and they showed me a rough copy, and see, I got caught flat-footed, so I'm going back over it with y'all. Because it's important that we get together and we think together and we got each other understood, and that we can work together as a team. That's, my whole life has been built around, and integrity is number one with me. And so when they asked me, you know, here it is, we're gonna take light pollution out and we're gonna redline this, and I said, well, be consistent. And if you're gonna do that and propose it to us, show us what you're redlining. There was no direction that said, well, take everything out and redo the whole thing. It's something for us to still consider and vote on and be, do the right process. That was all that was ever said. And as far as the other issue, talking in public or whatever it is, if somebody has suggested that, and I'll be the first to come to you, or you, Tom, if somebody tells me there's, that you all are decided that we're gonna go build a bridge and go do it, without considering it in a public meeting and us discussing it with the right people and the right experts in place. And that was my understanding with this zoning regulation. And also Clint, also, you know, it's important that we, you're part of the team. And if there's issues that you hear of, that we get us in hot water, that's why you're here, is to help us to not have that be a problem ever. So, you know, I apologize if, if for some reason whoever took it and said, Jay, did you hear, Kanda just directed us to clear all this out, and we're gonna have a new zoning regulation, and this is it, that never happened. So if it is, and I'll guarantee you that neither I, or Tom, or you are sneaking around behind anybody's backs, that will never happen. So I just want to make that clear, because, you know, I'm not...
I'm gonna respond if I'm...
Okay.
I'm sorry you took it that...
Well, you told me that I was out of line and I was exceeding my authority as a commissioner.
And I thought you were, based on, let me tell you, I'll tell you the kind of the story, how it came. I got a call from a newspaper reporter saying that, do I want to comment on this? And I said, I don't even know what you're talking about. I called Jackie, I called Vic, and it was relayed to me that they were instructed to take out any reference to light pollution. Hang on, I went off the deep end.
Well, don't get upset, call me.
I do, I get upset sometimes, I know I do, I know I do, it's one of my character traits, not a happy one, but it does. I called them and said, what in the you-know-what is going on here? Who the heck does he think he is? How could he order you to do that without a commissioner's approval? Okay, so let me finish, I listened to every word you said, okay? And I wanted to bring it to your attention, haven't really seen you since then. I dropped that one because I figured, okay, I wasn't gonna make an issue out of it, it's not that important, it got resolved, Vic put out a notice, he pulled his committee, and they all agreed, just leave it the way it was, hang on, hang on. And I dropped it, okay, not a big deal. But yesterday, when Vic said to me, I was told that you're not gonna, that I was asked to make a comment before the meeting, that you were not...
Well, I just thought it was appropriate that they knew you all were there, that was the point.
Hang on. I felt, wait a minute, you don't speak for me.
Right.
And I brought that up. I fully respect you, I really appreciate you sitting here, don't get that wrong. Because I have a year, which means nothing, okay? I'm just a commissioner like the rest of you.
Right.
But I thought it was important that we put on the table things that we have a concern about. When you said to me, here's how I feel, I said, thank you very much, I accept that, I never refuted a word you said against that. I said, I appreciate your comments, I wasn't there. You said something slightly different, I said, wonderful. I'm not here to argue, fight, I want to work as...
I'm saying here, and so Jay, check your temper sometimes when you get, when something hits you on the side. It's just my view of watching how you operate, I want you, I want to make you a success. I don't want us to be a success.
I appreciate you asking me to watch my temper.
It was all about redlining.
But I don't think that's appropriate.
No, I don't mean that, I don't mean that, I mean, we just...
I have yet to raise my voice.
No, 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 that's not what I meant.
But I have a right, if I feel that something is appropriate in place, I have a right to bring it to this tribunal in an open forum, which is what I did. I felt especially yesterday was totally inappropriate, and I speak for myself only. And I, you said to me, it was, I heard it differently than what you intended, I accepted that. I was over this, I mean, we're done.
Okay, well, I'm good.
You brought it back up, so I wanted to say, it was.
The only reason I did is to make sure you understood, it was the red line that came, that if we're gonna get red lines, we all understand what has been taken out and what's not.
And I dropped that, it was really the thing yesterday that concerned me the most. You explained it, I said, thank you for explaining it, and I'm done.
Okay, and I'm good, I'm happy, but we really, I think I've seen a big difference in how we operate, and I've gotten a lot of comments, you know, I'm all over, talking to people all the time about the process, what we're doing, they've gotten good compliments on the team here that we've been building, and I hate to see it chipped at if we don't talk with each other. Call me, I call Tom if I have an issue with it.
You don't respond to me, sir, I've written emails to you, I've called you.
You have?
Yes, many times.
I've missed them then.
Well, I think...
Emails are easy to miss.
And this is exactly what will keep us a healthy board of county commissioners for this county. Whether, whether what transpired was what was belated or not, we can't control that.
Right.
I responded the same way, and we were responding to what we were told. And so that's what we had to go on in this particular instance, this is yesterday. Whether that happened or not is not really the issue, it's that's what we were presented with, that's how we're...
And, you know, and I judge, I understand your character, and I believe you have integrity, and we ought to respect each other for that, and if there's somebody that's coming around, who knows what context they get things from, or from their opinions of the past. So we just have to be careful and let's talk to each other. And if, and if you can't get me on that email, because email's tough with anybody. Unfortunately, in this day and age, emails, everybody thinks that once you shoot an email out, that's communication, it's not, because who knows why they don't get to it, and a lot of things happen. So be careful with that, just might, might do the same thing. And I'm real big, and I'll call you in a heartbeat if I'm worried about something that I thought you had said, or were doing wrong, we gotta understand that. And I don't mean making decisions, I would never call you and say, well, let's get together and figure out what we're gonna do differently. That's never happened, and it hasn't ever happened with all of us right now, just get that on record, because we are very careful in making sure we're making decisions in the open. And that's why it was surprising that anybody would accuse me of making a directive. a directive, directing somebody to do something. I directed them to get it to in front of us, redline the darn thing and, and do it.
Accuse is a really difficult term for me because in nowhere, we can go back to the record, did I accuse you of that?
No, I'm not saying you did, I'm saying that if apparently somebody had taken it as direction, that I'm stepping out of bounds and, and you should know me better than that.
I'm not that way. You explained, I said, great, we're good.
Let's move on.
All right, let's move on.
A move we adjourn this meeting.
Well, I'm not.
Okay, we can have discussion.
I would like to get some attorney advice in an executive session if it's acceptable to you as a time.
Okay, uh, let's go back. Obviously, we have one person in the public. Do you have any comments that you'd like to present to the board?
No, just that I have received, um, questions from everyone, how everyone's doing. And I always realize that you guys are doing great and, you know, you get along well and there are no issues, so I just wondered.
Good, appreciate that.
There's a tremendous amount, obviously, a tremendous amount of respect between the three of us.
Absolutely.
We treat each other with dignity, courtesy.
Who's that on?
And you don't know how much I appreciate that and I thank you for saying it because I see it, I appreciate it. It's, the reason we have three of us is so we can disagree. If not, we'd have a king of Custer County who would make the decisions and it's fine. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you for your work, your reporting, your faithful, man. Long meeting yesterday and obviously turned out to be a little longer meeting today than what we anticipated, but thank you.
Absolutely, and with that all screwed out.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Executive session, yes, Mr. Jay, and you certainly are entitled to make that request as any of us would be, so.
Really necessary, just to me being cautious, is it?
Uh, I, I believe he has an item he'd like to discuss and it needs to be discussed in, in executive session also.
And it may not be.
No, he just asked me to.
But I feel it's necessary.
Okay, let me pull, um.
Taking the live streaming off?
As soon as you motion and we go out of regular session, then I will turn the live stream off.
And is this a personnel matter, Mr. Jay?
Uh, no, it's executive advice.
Oh, for legal advice, I'm sorry, you said that, yes, okay.
Is that fair enough, Clint?
Yeah.
Keeps us out of trouble?
Right, well, he'll make, he'll make a more formal statement when he finds the form he needs to.
All right.
Forty-two, uh, sub-four, sub, sorry, twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, sub-four, sub-B would be legal advice, so, um, do we handle that as a motion or can I direct that into executive session? No, it needs to be a motion to go into executive session pursuant to that statutory provision for legal advice.
Jay, make the move.
Yep, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the regular meeting and we convene an executive session pursuant to CRS Section 24-6, 402, sub-four, sub-B, um, for the purpose of, of, of attorney advice.
I'll second it.
All right, thank you. One correction, I would, not adjourn, we're recessing. We're going to executive session. Thank you, okay.
I'll accept that.
All right, been moved and seconded that we, uh, recess into an executive session with our attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice based on Colorado Revised Statute Section 24-6-402, sub-four, sub-B. Any further discussion about that, gentlemen?
And you have to say who's in the.
I was gonna ask, uh, your request, uh, Kelly would need to be in there for recording purposes, but legal advice has to be recorded or no?
No, we don't.
We don't record legal advice.
All right.
But you have to state who's in it, who's in the.
Who's all of it.
I'm not gonna speak for you.
Okay, present, present at this executive session would be Brenda Gady, administrative assistant, uh, Clint Smith, the county attorney, um, Mr. Ilkanda, commissioner, Tom Flower, commissioner, Jay Prince, commissioner, and Kelly, are you staying or going?
I think the more we have, the better.
And Kelly Camp or clerk recording.
She needs to be here.
She shouldn't need.
Thank you, yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing done, proceed to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries, we are in recess executive session.
We get back on?
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, for the record, the time is now eleven fifty-six, fifty-four, I'm sorry, eleven fifty-four. Um, and the executive session has been concluded. Uh, the participants in the executive session were Commissioner Kanda, Commissioner Flower, Commissioner Prince, Counselor Smith, Secretary to the Board, Kelly Camper, and the Administrative Assistant, Ms. Brenda Gady. For the record, if any person who participated in the executive session believes that there was any substantial discussion for matters not included in the motion to go into executive session, uh, that occurred, uh, please voice your, uh, opinion. Hearing done, the, uh, Board of County Commissioners meeting has been resumed. And for the record, I generally make a statement. Yes, thank you. And as the county attorney, I was present during the executive session, session. Uh, we did stay on topic the entire time, addressed two issues where there was a request for legal advice, so none of the executive session was recorded, but my legal opinion, everything was done in accordance with the law. Thank you, sir, appreciate that. Um, okay, other topics to come before the board?
Yes, sir. I'd just like to state on the record, based on the, um, advice of counsel and the issues that we discussed, that, uh, I appreciate the counsel, Attorney Smith giving us this information, and, uh, I choose not to move forward on anything that was discussed.
All right, thank you. Uh, I would bring before the group the possibility of maybe us, uh, appointing a commissioner to serve on the County Building Needs Steering Committee. Our next meeting is February the twenty-seventh. Uh, I personally would feel more comfortable if we had one commissioner sit on that committee instead of three.
Respectfully, I feel differently. Since it's a steering committee, ultimately, no decision will ever be made in that committee. Um, and I think that's when you violate the sunshine laws, when it's not open to the public and decisions are made. I think if we post it as a workshop and invite the public, that, um, we've, we'll be complying with the sunshine law. In addition, I don't believe any decisions will ever be made at, as part of this workshop or committee. Ultimately, it'll come to us in an open session as to what we choose to do based on a recommendation of this committee. I think we're talking about potentially very significant changes within the county in terms of facilities. Um, I, I personally would prefer to see three of us, if we, the three choose to, or at least to be open to the three of us, since I don't feel we'll be breaking any sunshine laws and it'll be done as a workshop. So respectfully, I feel opposite than you do and that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
And maybe we should just vote and decide.
What value do you see, I want to, I want to understand the other side of the coin. What did the three of us together bring that, that, uh, one or the other of us couldn't be able to bring forward and still get that interaction later if we're at different stages?
You know, I'd love to tell you my father's statement, but it has a dirty word in it, so I won't.
It's bleeping out, let's hear it.
My father used to always say to me, two heads are better than one, even if they're in a use of an expletive. If they, you know, more, the people who more.
More input you get.
The more input you get, the better the decision will be. Um, I've been involved in this from the beginning, um, and that doesn't mean a thing, okay? But I think your perspective on what's needed may be different than Tom's, maybe different mine, and the same with all three of us. I think the three of us, who ultimately will have to make the final decision, assuming it happens within our term, need to be not just here from someone else. We heard what happened today earlier and I'm not trying to rehash what we started this day with, miscommunications. Um, I personally would like to be involved with it so I can hear it, see it, touch it, smell it, get my guts really involved in it. And I'm not sure I could be that way if just one, if one person were reporting it to me. As we saw this point, we know what that could lead to.
Okay, that's a good point, let me give you a perspective, sure. That's why we have a committee with multiple people in, in order to get multiple experiences in there. And, and I have found, in, in my experience, that, uh, that you, the more people you have, the better. Uh, the problem is when, when the commander, the three of us are then there, uh, we tend to get group think going or can lose sight and not let somebody bring in some things that we ought to try to stay above and then make decisions once we hear the options that are presented, if, if they're doing their job. And that, I would look at that commissioner as the guy that would want to make sure that the, that variety of experiences brought in there and that those options, they're options, not a solution, see, that's the problem. A lot of people think they have to solve it. Sometimes you need to present what courses of action there are and let the people that have, uh, your heart and soul in it and your ideas, your perspective and my perspective and Tom's in this case, to come and, um, and make a good decision with. Sometimes you get led down the path and you, you, you all come together as a solution and we go forward, here's the answer, and you come back to the board with the answer and that, that would be short us, changing the community here. So I, I can see it both ways. Um, I, I'm what, I'm where Tom was originally on us discussing this, it's a little dicey with the three of us in here. Maybe two, we can rotate, you know, there's no reason why we can't, uh, keep in touch is another option. Uh, and I don't blame you for not wanting to, I mean, you've been here through it, you sat through some, some other discussions that have got us where we are today and you got the scar tissue, so, just a, just a thought.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Well, I, of, a lot of the committees and stuff that I've set in on, certainly I'm as excited about this steering committee as, as most of them because I really believe that there's an opportunity here for us to, uh, move forward and, and have some serious community inputs.
Be world-class in our answers.
I am not, uh, I'm not opposed, I'm not arguing your standpoint, I happen to agree with it, I'm, I just want us to be kind of all on the same page or at least, and that's why I sought legal advice for clarification, to make sure, uh, I would continue to like to meet, uh, and so therefore I, I'm gonna, I will make, I move, sorry, I'm stumbling, I move that we direct our administrative assistant to post all subsequent steering committees as workshops, uh, and then I will feel much better about that.
I will too, and, uh, as a matter of fact, I think we made a very good.
I'll second that, okay, go ahead.
Now the discussion.
Been moved and seconded that we, uh, direct our administrative assistant to post all the steering committee meetings pertaining to the county needs assessment group, um, as a public workshop.
And I think, uh, I agree with that, that, uh, one thing we did that was good last time is we made Shannon in charge.
I thought that was a great move.
And that keeps it in, in the right perspective. It's not us and would have been wrong for any one of us to jump up and say, oh, they just.
I agree with.
Well, and we, meaning the committee selected Shannon.
The committee made that.
We did not do that.
Well, the party committee did.
The committee selected.
Now, I don't mean we.
Okay, that's what I'm.
We, the committee, yeah, that's, that's a good point. Um, that would have been wrong if they had said, Jay, take it, or Tom.
I agree with you, I agree.
So, uh, you know, I, I just have to be careful what we say in those meetings and how we say it.
I'll go there.
Because, uh, it, it'll come to bite us.
Right, questions been called, all in favor of previous question, which means we will in debate and take an immediate vote, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. Question passes, all in favor of the motion, which states to direct our administrative assistant to post all subsequent steering committee, uh, meetings pertaining to the county needs assessment as public workshops, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. Any further business to come before the board?
I'd just like to say I appreciate the two of you. I mean, I, I, I'm not a hugy kissy type guy. No, I, I mean, this is the way it ought to work and I appreciate it. And that's on the record and I just want you to know.
Good, thank you. Anything else, Ms. K?
Can you just, 'cause you've called that committee two different.
Yeah, you gotta get the name right.
So what's the, what's, what's the name of that committee?
Well, and that's the problem, we have not selected a formal name.
You don't have a name, okay, all right.
We had agreed that for now, we would call that the County Needs Assessment Steering Committee.
For judicial.
But, well, no, and that was part of the discussion, it wasn't just for judicial, it was including judicial, but also for other county.
That's right, it's county government, uh, needs.
Yeah, so it was really a needs assessment.
We just narrowed it, it was county government needs, it's not.
Well, I think we said county building needs.
Building or, uh.
I thought it was just needs assessment, but I guess maybe that would be the first include.
That's pretty right, I mean, we got a lot of needs, like roads, I mean, we better narrow it down.
But we can't, if we say county government, then this is judicial as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, it would be the county, uh, buildings needs.
No.
Not yet. Technically, if you read Shannon's email, he.
Did he name it?
He did kinda name it Team Awesome, which is fine, but that's.
[laughing].
And said, this, I hope everybody's okay with this name, well, I'm not, because I think we need to be a little more descriptive.
Team Awesome.
Um, so we will have that discussion at our next steering meeting, which of course, as you gentlemen know, February twenty-seventh, correct?
And, and just FYI, it is posted, um, I have it as a court security meeting because that's what.
Okay. It's what it started out as, but it's kinda morphed into something else.
Strategic plan, it's the county strategic needs.
If we need to change that, let me know what you want it to be.
Stay tuned.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it has to be twenty-four hours, so we can change the name prior to that and probably be just fine.
Think about it.
Anything else, ladies and gentlemen?